All right, are there any public comments on items not listed for a public hearing or for public comment today on the agenda? Brandon, I'm not sure you're welcome to make a public comment if that's what you're here for.
No.
Oh, great. Perfect. Okay, we'll hear from you shortly, sir. All right, I will close the public comment again if there are items listed for public hearing or public comment. When we get to them, we will take public comment on those items at that time. I will kick off Commissioner comments by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving and hope you all have a lovely, safe, and snowy holiday next week and enjoy time with your friends and loved ones, eating delicious food, and celebrating how you choose. Ellen, we have moved on from public comment. Are you here for the airport FBO? Or did you want to make?
Public comment.
Okay. You, I will reopen the public comment to allow you to come on up. We had already closed it. It's your.
Geez, sorry.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Look, you guys are right on the nose. Red is on or off?
Red is on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Ellen Anderson, and I've gone through this and I'm going to ask for one extra minute. It's going to take me four minutes if I'm, and I'm going to be respectful of your time, if I may. To the county commissioners, good morning, or good afternoon. As a Picken County citizen, I'm advising you, the elected commissioners, that you can no longer ignore the emerging science of the last years that clearly warns of the newly discovered great dangers of ground air pollution. I'm not talking about greenhouse, I'm talking about on the ground. Five years ago, December 2020, the common ground recommendations of the vision committee were finalized. The number one recommendation was, quote, "Safety in the air and on the ground." The important part of safety on the ground is the risk to human health caused by ground air pollution from jet engine exhaust. Thousands of people live, work, ski, hike very close to the runway, and their breathing air, which sometimes, as you know, is so polluted that it literally stinks of aircraft exhaust. During these five years since you adopted the recommendations, advances in science have taught us how much more toxic jet exhaust is to the human body than previously known. We didn't know it before that. Science has advanced, but you, the county commissioners, don't seem to have kept up. You continue to ignore concerned citizens' attempts to alert you to these newly found health hazards. You still have not measured the air at the ground, on the ground, even though the Picken County Home, the Home Rule Charter says you have a duty to protect the air. You're still aggressively moving ahead to accommodate larger, more polluting private jets without acknowledging these important advances. And I'm not talking about the terminal. The terminal, I'm sure, will be green, and that's very exciting, and that's, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about just the runway. If you Google "can living near an airport make you sick?", you'll see the answer is a resounding yes. We now know that nanoparticles and ultrafine particles that are smaller than PM 2.5 are so tiny, they travel from your lung to your blood, and they lodge in every organ in your body. And they've been linked to cardiac, cognitive, respiratory problems, and now even cancer and autism, just recently autism. I have just a couple of links, and I'm not, I'm going to go, just through a couple very quickly. One was just a couple weeks before the election, just hot off the press. Prenatal exposure to fine particulate matter components and autism risk in childhood. Prenatal exposure to specific PM 2, PM 2.5 components were associated with increased autism spectrum disorder. Just the month before that, exposure to air pollution, and they were talking about particulates, worsens Alzheimer's, and it said it has, doesn't have to be a long exposure. Little studied, 2025, June, little studied pollutant from planes threatens the health of millions. June of 2024, ultrafine particles from planes puts 52 million Europeans at risk of serious health conditions. Another 2024, beyond the runway, respiratory health effects of ultrafine particles in children. Aviation has been shown to cause high particle number concentration in areas surrounding airports. And just two more. High levels of particulate air pollution associated with increased breast cancer incidents. And then 2023, these are all 2023 and later. Even safe air pollution levels can harm the developing brain. They discovered that the EPA thresholds for this is what's dangerous were way too high and much lower levels are dangerous. So in conclusion, I'd just like to remind you of that, one of my favorite sayings, do the best you can, and when you know better, do better. Maya Angelou, and I know you did your best in 2020. This is five years later, and now I think you have a moral imperative to do better because you know better. Following the number one common ground recommendation, you, I believe you must prioritize the recommendation, safety on the ground as well as in the air, and protect the lives of citizens. You have the duty, I think, to protect, to keep the larger planes off the runway. It's a matter of physics. The larger planes may be cleaner at altitude, but not on the ground. So each of you, elected commissioners, individually now has the opportunity, and I believe the obligation, to do a deep dive into your own conscience and ask yourself the question, which is more important, following the science and protecting the health of Picken County residents or allowing larger private planes?
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Let you go past quite a bit.
Thank you.
Please, if you want to forward those links to me, I'll make sure the board receives them as well.
I'm sorry.
If you would like to forward the links to those articles, I'd be happy to make sure.
Yes, I would like to do that, and I also would like to email it individually to you for, so for your ease, all you have to do is click on these links and you can read the science for yourself.
Great, thank you.
You can read the whole thing, so I want you to have it in email form, too.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you very much.
Cheers. Okay, we did reopen public comment in case there were any latecomers. I don't think I see anyone in the room wishing to make additional public comments. And no one online? I know who all of you are, so, all right, let's go ahead. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back again to Commissioner comments. I've made mine. I'll move on to boards. Patty?
Snow.
Please.
My public comment. Please, please, snow. I know it's moving through California, it's hitting really hard. I've been following the news because of family and friends who lost homes in the fires in California. Now they're being hit with mudslides, too much rain, heavy snows in the Sierras. We would appreciate them sending some of that snow our way and some cold temperatures so we could at least be making snow because it is the holiday, the opening is just, seems like it's going to be tomorrow, so, and we can always start that snowpack now so we have good water in the spring. And happy Thanksgiving also to everyone on the board, everyone who's here in the room, to the Picken County staff, and to all of our friends and neighbors in Picken County and the Roaring Fork Valley, and everyone who's going to come visit us and expect snow.
All right, other Commissioner comments?
I don't, thank you.
None today? Nope? Okay.
Well, I can make one.
Please.
There's an art show.
An art show? Oh, yes. With esteemed artists.
And one of the future artists happens to be sitting at this table, Greg Poishman, and it is kind of a cool art show idea. It's all local artists, and each piece can only be one foot by one foot, correct? And they're all $250 or less, I think.
Less, yeah.
So you can buy original local art and support our local artists. I'm going.
And there are quantity discounts.
At the Aspen Chapel.
It's at the Aspen Chapel in their gallery in the lower floor. It's called Small Wonders. It makes excellent gifts.
Is that how they set the size? Because they're calling the exhibit Small Wonder.
Every year.
Yeah. And I just want to point to tell all the staff and anyone else listening, there's no way you can curry favor for me by buying my pieces from my website, you know. Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations.
That was a good slide that, isn't it?
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have two items. We have the minutes of November 5th regular voting session, as well as the appointment of citizen board members, which in this case is Laura Whitley to, as the second alternate on our airport advisory board.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with enthusiasm.
Thanks, Greg.
Second.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Any further discussion?
I'd like a quick comment.
Please.
I want to thank Laura for taking this on with the AAB as the alternate, second number two alternate, and I believe she came from a recommendation that she applied from you. Didn't you encourage? So thank you for doing that.
I did.
I think she'll make a great member of that board. So thanks, Greg.
Troublemaker.
All right. Great. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our first item here, an individual consideration item, a one-reading informal resolution. Normally, we do not take public comment on informal resolutions. However, knowing the great interest in our airport project, the board has elected to welcome public comment on this, is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners approving a proposed capital improvement plan submitted by Atlantic Aviation for the fixed space facility at the Aspen-Picken County Airport Sardi Field. Now invite airport staff, oh, we have a statement from a board.
Right, yeah, it's, come on up, come on up, you're welcome to. I just wanted to say that because I have a family member who has a, works with Atlantic Aviation, it has been my practice to recuse from all the conversations regarding finance and plans with Atlantic. I look forward to that, to that, being able to join the meetings again, but I think I'll just stay, stay with my habit of recusing and I'll, I'll try to monitor or hear from you about coming in for the next item.
All right, I'll text you.
So I'll just be on campus listening in from upstairs.
You're taking both? Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Greg. Appreciate the disclosure.
See y'all soon.
Hi.
Should I wait, Kelly, or can I start for you?
Oh, you can't say anything.
Are you, do you need to connect to the presentation? We'll let, we'll, we'll let Greg exit the room. Have our airport team come online here. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. We are back in front of you. We were in front of you on the work session November 6th to review the Atlantic Capital Improvement Plan as part of their lease with the airport. They are available to run through their presentation again with you. The only change that I would ask that you consider after talking to Rye yesterday is adding another paragraph in the resolution to include them in our land use and extents process. And Rye, I don't know if you want to kind of elaborate on that.
Yeah, I can do that. Maybe you want to give your presentation, and then I give a heads up to the chair that I propose an amendment to the resolution at some point.
Perfect. Brandon, Jonathan, I will let you introduce yourselves and take it away.
Jonathan Jones, I'm local here with Atlantic Aviation. We are honored to be here and speak to you, and we can run through the entire presentation or, or a shorter version if you want, totally up to you. And, and I'm, I'm so happy to be sitting next to Brandon because he is the mastermind behind everything that we're, we're accomplishing, so I'll let you.
I will just interject. I think because it's a big deal and it's only a one-read, that you should give the presentation for the public's benefit.
Great, I agree. Sounds great.
Okay. Well, I'm Brandon, Senior Director, Construction Development with Atlantic Aviation. Happy to be here. Thank you, and we'll get started.
Okay. So, want to just talk about the overall plan and where the FBO is. We spoke about that quite a bit at the last meeting, but I want to go ahead and take anyone who has any questions, just stop me. We, we made some changes from the original vision plan. We did so with the understanding to try and accomplish the goals and the recommendations as much as possible and, and the core values of the vision plan. A lot of that accomplishes three of those major goals, right, with the environment, the sound, and then safety and operational need. We're, we're really at the forefront of that, that change, and I want to, I want to say it's absolutely great to work alongside with the county and the AAB on all these decisions and get their feedback and talk about what, what's best for the airport. And this is where we've come in, in this plan, is to have the FBO similar to where it currently sits. It's, it's off just a little bit from that, but, but very close. And it, it's really, it accomplishes the goals in how we, we can exit aircraft because of the one-way traffic coming into Aspen. We can exit off of Alpha 4 and directly onto our ramp. We can, we can eliminate a lot of running time on the ground by doing this and, and using that ramp as our primary ramp, and then using the other ramp as our overnight storage. So, so that's the, the largest change to this, and we, we've got us, another slide that, that shows that middle section a little bit better, and we can go into more detail with that. Is there any questions about this right off the bat?
If I can interject for just a second, Jonathan. Just to let the commissioners know, you had presented this at our July meeting, and after that, we had two AAB members specifically asked to go and tour the differences of the site before they brought it back to the AAB. And the differences were toured with you personally.
Yes.
With two AAB members and brought back that both recommended it.
Yes.
So I just thought that was an important point to go over.
Bruce and Andrew, which I would consider aviation experts with, as long as they've been flying, they're, they're great, their feedback was, was really good to receive, and, and it, it just confirmed what we had, the conclusions we had come to.
Could you maybe just show, like, if you're a landing plane, what your circulation's going to look like, and then if you're a taking off plane, what your circulation is going to look like?
Sure. So landing aircraft come in, just like the mouse is moving across the screen right now. A lot of aircraft can exit right there at Alpha 4, which eliminates a lot of the issues with the terminal traffic, that the airlines coming out, getting pushed back onto Alpha, eliminates a lot of issues with that. And then they can go right onto the ramp, and at that point, they can shut their engines down, and that's, that's key. One of the issues that we faced with the FBO team down on, where it says overnight parking on this slide, is that a landing aircraft is coming, and an aircraft that is sitting on that ramp can't start taxiing down until that aircraft is, is on the ramp. And at that point, that amount of time, you've got another aircraft landing. You're basically sterilizing your taxiway because of the just normal traffic operations, and that affects the airlines, it affects the entire airport. In this scenario, we can have aircraft waiting to go, they're closer to the end of the runway because everything takes off in the same directions as it's landing, and we can, we can keep the flow moving through the ramp and, and also exiting right there at Alpha without having long wait times for aircraft just sitting on the ramp. I know one of the, the key thoughts for us was during those times when tower says, "Hold", if, if they, they start their engines, call tower, they're expecting to go right away. If they have to hold with those engines running, that's going to be an environmental issue over the long term. And, and it really, when you're talking about the amount of time it takes to taxi, they don't taxi fast. And that's good. We don't want them going speedy down the taxiway. That's, that's not at all what we want. But, but we also want that smooth flow of traffic that eliminates long run times on the ramp and, and, and creates the flow that's needed for, for ATC to, to run the airport. So this just made sense, it makes sense environmentally. And then, and, and the one issue that we really had to tackle as a part of this was the sound issue, that, how, how we address that, and, and in later slides, we, we show what that is.
And so what does it look like when you're taking off? You're just coming onto the?
Yeah, you're coming, yes.
Taxiway and, maybe show us with the cursor, yeah.
So you'd be right here on this ramp, and then you would just exit and go straight down. It's a shorter taxi time. It, it's short, it's shorter coming in, it's shorter going out, the taxi times are reduced dramatically in that respect.
Thank you.
That's, so from Alpha 3 to Alpha 1 is, is 3,000 feet. When you're going slow in an aircraft, that's a long taxi. And so I, I, when you're just exiting Alpha 4 directly onto a ramp and you shut down, it, it shortens taxi times quite a bit.
Francie.
And so the plane that just landed and is trying to stay out of the way, where is it? Can you use your cursor to show me where that is?
It, that's Alpha 4 right there.
And the terminal?
Okay, so the taxi guy goes around that, and that plane waits there at that little crossover place.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important, too, if you can just show everyone where the terminal is in relation to that, so they know that commercial traffic is separated, that's why.
Commercial terminals, yep, to the right.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Keep going, please.
Okay. So just general ideas of what the FBO might look like on the land side and then on the air side. We also have to clarify, it is not red. The AAB wanted to make sure it was not going to be red. This is just, just a mock-up to kind of, to show, we have a lot of designing to do and, and looking at the color, but it would, we were considering like the rust type look, something very modern. Please go ahead.
No, it, again, it'll match the Aspen look and feel.
Accorten steel.
Or similar, so it's really just going to fade into the...
Rusty steel.
Yes, sorry, rusty steel. Yep. Stones, gosh, I, I passed a, a building coming up from Basalt this morning, and it, there's, it's on the right-hand side, has this cobble behind, that, that's a very similar look that, you know, we would expect to see, but maybe most importantly, CCI, who's local here, will be leading the charge on how to make it look like it fits.
Francie.
So there won't be an attempt to make it integrated with the main terminal? They won't have similar looks?
We, we had talked about that. One of the things that Aspen is known for, when we, we started talking about it, was the, the diversity in the type of architecture that we see here from, from the museum to, say, this building or different things like that. And we are, we are absolutely not against it looking like one campus, but we also think that in, and, and CCI would agree with this, that, that some change, some diversity, some different-looking buildings might fit Aspen better in the long run as far as what, what we have here. So that's, that's the direction we took.
And if I may?
Guess it's obvious, I don't live in Aspen.
I think the coordination, too, will come with the design team. As far as your design team is the terminal one, and that's the landscape.
Absolutely.
To help everything blend from 82 together.
Okay.
Did you have a comment? No? I'll just say, I don't think red is terrible. I think some nod to Bauhaus somewhere in our airport project would be great.
I like the red.
The building we're in is red that we just built.
I prefer Victorian, so I like an old Victorian look.
There you go.
I think we all have our own personal problems with it.
All duly noted.
One more quick question. What is the square footage on, on your terminal?
Yeah, it's approximately 7,500 square feet.
Okay.
Which is very similar to what we have today. Okay, this is the west side, and, and we are currently not designing, we're not doing, there's several steps, dominoes that have to fall before the west side's ever accomplished, but we just wanted to include this in, in our, our plans to show you this, the, the building and how that might look on the west side. Once again, we are not doing anything with the west side.
That is a separate environmental process needed.
Absolutely.
For the west side development.
Absolutely. Okay. So this is a close-up on that middle section and, and how it would look. We also had some questions, the fuel, with the FAA tower and behind that tower is the FAA parking, and, and then we have our fuel farm, we have our, our larger hangar, and on the side of that, we have our GSC shop with, with offices for charter services, and, and then a small, small lean-to for operations and, which goes right into our maintenance hangar that's right there. And then we have an area for eVTOL, but when that comes, we'll be prepared for it as soon as it gets here. And, and then we get to the, where the, the FBO is with, and, and how it's positioned on the ramp. Any, any questions?
What is the big white square?
The hangar.
Okay.
How many planes do you park in there? One?
No, it's three, usually three.
Depending on size, Jonathan, just to give them an idea.
Yes, anywhere from three to five. It depends on the size. We can, smaller airplanes, we can get five in there, and larger aircraft, it's three.
Go ahead, Patty.
I'm going to expand on that. And is that mostly for maintenance? Or is it, do people actually, they don't rent the space within the hangar?
Well, we, we do have tenants, but, but they also transit traffic, and, and yes to maintenance and no to maintenance.
Depending upon what's going on.
If, if the tail height exceeds our current hangar that we have for maintenance, that would be the scenario. We, we are also, we're designing it at a door height that allows us to service aircraft that, that might need to be in the hangar to, to be able to leave Aspen. So we, we've had long conversations about all of those needs that might be in the future and trying to, trying to see ahead to, to what makes sense, but I, I think that this, this size hangar and the door height makes sense for, for what we have in the future.
Thank you.
Just to make sure we're clear, when we talk about maintenance, we do not anticipate installing a foam system in this hangar, and certain maintenance items trigger foam. Foam is kind of a bad word environmentally, and we just don't want to do that. So this hangar will not have a foam system.
Is it required to have some level of maintenance at the FBO, isn't it? Do you have any fundamental basics?
Correct. Yep.
Francie.
If you have tenants in there, what, are they, would they be planes that come and go, or would they be, I mean, is it going to be empty a lot of the time when people aren't flying in? You know what I'm saying? Like, how often will it be occupied?
Sure. I, I would just, so in the summertime, it is, it is, there's one hangar queen that always stays in the hangar, that's what they, they call it. They even got floor mats. But, but the, the, most of the time in the summertime, there's not a, an aircraft or a transient aircraft in the hangar.
Okay.
In the wintertime, we absolutely get more demand for it, and there's, there's always aircraft in the hangar.
So it's kind of, kind of a pain for them to go in and out of a hangar compared to just being outside waiting to leave in a few days or whatever?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
I think the benefits, too, Jonathan, to explain to them de-icing and stuff, if they're injured.
Sure, sure. The, the aircraft's warm, there's de-icing that you, you don't have to have, and, and just, just the ability to, to be at the aircraft without, without being in the elements is, is a value.
Where you keep going.
You want to do this?
Yeah. So a couple of key east side items to call out. We are looking at approximately 18 to 20-foot-tall sound wall, and we'll go into why that's important here in a couple of slides. There will be a landscape berm that's going to help screen that, so it's not going to feel like a big prison wall there. In fact, you might not even see the wall with the amount of landscaping that we have scheduled. We are also obligated by the lease to install 100,000 square feet of snowmelt system, and it will be powered by renewable energy. That is one difference here on the slide from the previous presentation. And then, of course, we have our eVTOL area that we'll be ready for, and a new north ramp that we're working alongside the airport and team as a part of the, the ongoing project there on the north end. So this just highlights the sound wall, again, all the way to the left. Sorry, my mouse is not working well here, but Highway 82 is off-page to the left, and so there's an existing short berm there between Highway 82 and Airport Road, and then we would be doing a taller berm with landscaping and trees to essentially hide what's happening as much as we can on the airport side. as much as we can on the airport side. Lower visual just shows the cross-section of where that sound wall is. But largely goes from existing maintenance hangar all the way around to this corner up here.
Wow.
Yeah.
Big.
Yeah.
Concrete?
It'll be concrete or block of sort. There's a lot of smarter people working on that than me, uh, but it'll be, it, yeah, they're engineering that. I've seen a, a, a detail of it. It looks like, uh, if you're familiar with the rifle airport.
The what?
Yeah, there's, they've got big blocks. So you'll see it from air side. You won't see that from, uh, land side.
Block, concrete.
Love this visual. So left side are existing conditions today. We worked with a third-party noise consultant, Landgerman Brown, they're out of Ohio. They do this nationwide for airports. So on the left side, you'll see the star. They took sound, uh, measurements of an APU, an actual aircraft running here at this star. And you can see these dots here over, uh, in our neighborhood across Highway eighty-two. So these are decibel meters that they set up. These are existing conditions today, so that's what we would expect.
APU versus GPU.
Sorry, APU, if I said GPU, apologize, APU.
Oh, no, just explaining to them the difference.
Oh. Okay, good, thank you. APU is from the aircraft, so that's the auxiliary power unit that an aircraft is running. GPU is a ground power unit. Those are all electric.
And silent.
And silent. So the red star is an APU noise coming from the aircraft. So we expect our folks, uh, our friends across Highway eighty-two, this is what they hear today. On the right side, the sound wall on the previous slide, this is post-sound wall. So you can see much of this area goes from perceptible, which is this red area, fifty to fifty-five decibels, down to in our yellow area, which is possibly perceptible and even touching into an unlikely perceptible noise range. If you just take a snapshot in your, in your brain of this, of another slide that I think will help kind of gel our sound wall. On the left, this is without any aircraft or airport noise. So if we moved to the airport, to Utah, this is what the sound still registers just from Highway eighty-two noise and traffic. So left side is rush hour, uh, what you may have experienced this morning at seven-thirty. Right side is what our friends will hear again, normal evening traffic. Buses, trucks, vehicles, date nights, uh, that's what they can expect to hear. So going back one slide, you can see it's, it's nearly identical to what you would hear from standard road noise.
Francie.
Yes.
So the noise abatement is only when the airplane's on the ground, right? Once it takes off, then there's the roar of the airport, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. We...
Can't do anything about that, I understand.
We, thank you.
Just making sure I understand what it is we're talking about.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think we have any more questions on that, thank you.
Yeah.
This is just more detail about the west side, which we know we're, we are moving on quickly. We'll just keep, keep going here. And more west side, which we will just plow through this presentation.
Just let me jump in here. For future planning on the west side, there will be a separate location and extent effort that would occur for the west side development.
I'm gonna let Ry and Ben this, but it is a whole separate environmental process as well with FAI. So we've tried to make that very clear in every step, that this is their plan, however, we do have to go through that process.
Yeah, okay. See you nodding, thank you.
Yes. Scope of any location and extent review process will have to cover the scope of the project that is to be developed. So to the extent that west side development, whether that be wholly associated with the FBO project or, uh, FBO and county initiative on the west side of the runway, would require additional location and extent review.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. So it's possible amendment to the master plan could come forward on this component and then additional approval processes related to the environmental reviews and the land use reviews.
I think that's a relatively accurate forecast of what that would look like.
Thank you. Francie.
Um, so timing-wise, are we expecting the yours to be built first and then the west side? And where does everybody, where are the local pilots parked in the meantime?
Go back to where the north terminal is to kind of give them an idea, um, to show them where the current shelters are. Well, that one's a good one.
Well, let's go.
I have another question on this before we go too far.
So currently where they're parked is where they, they will stay until the, the west side is completed. They are home, they are, um, exactly where they've been and, and well, where they will be as we go up to this. You can, what we're, this is, this is when everything is completed and the whole nine yards. But right now, all those patio shelters are right there, uh, and the tie-downs are there and everything stays as is and we support those aircraft today and continue to do so. So nothing changes for those pilots, um, until the timing and everything moves in its proper course to, to move them to the west side.
I see.
They will always have a home.
Absolutely.
So that particular place where they're parked now won't interfere with your constructions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great, thanks.
And then maybe I'll ask my question. I guess I'm wondering, is, um, is the investigation into, um, EVTOL technology far enough along where this space is, where we know this space to be sufficient or compliant? Those aircraft might be flying here.
Love that question. Uh, yes, an emphatic yes. We, we have several partnerships with, uh, Beta, Joby, Archer. We're very well...
And those are EVTOL manufacturers?
Yes, thank you, sorry. Yes, those are manufacturers. So we, we have their 3D models and we know exactly what they look like and how they land, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think we're on the schedule.
Yes, ma'am. Great. And just a high level of, uh, what we expect our project to look like as far as timing goes. Red bar is approximately where we are today. And you can see we're trying to coordinate a lot of, uh, what we're doing alongside airport and consolidating as much as we can some of that construction traffic and so forth. We'll utilize similar resources and, um, kind of a symbiotic relationship between what airport is doing and what we intend to do.
If I may just add on to that, 'cause I know there has been some concern about limited resources in the valley and I think we went over this in the work session, but I think it's important to point out too. What you are looking at is very specialized, say for the hangar and such, so we will not be competing, competing for resources. And if we are, we have already worked together to make sure that the airport's projects get done.
Absolutely. Okay.
Like what kind of resources? Like pavement and stuff?
With all of them, yeah.
People are specialized.
And, and like the hangar, there's, there's just certain people, firms that build hangars for, that, that you're not gonna need for the terminal or the runway, but, but we can utilize those, those resources in that timeframe. And, and it will, it plays no role in competing for resources. Yeah, even, even the fuel farm is a great example. There's, there's people who build fuel farms, but they don't want anything to do with the, what, what's happening at the airport, with the terminal and the runway. So it's a good relationship in that, that respect. They're not competing for resources and, and we are not, that's, that's been foundational for us to not compete in any way with the, the resources that's, that are needed for the terminal and the runway.
Even though the construction might be simultaneous?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Yes, Ben.
What about, um, competing with the lumberyard? I mean, are there specialists that build lumberyards and specialists who build terminals? Um, 'cause you know, that's gonna be happening about the same time also. Theirs project is scheduled to start a little earlier than ours, I think, at the lumberyard. But you know, we already now, without these projects, have limited human resources for contractors. So I think it's just something we're gonna have to play out.
As far as the airport, yes. We are working very closely together in partnership on that.
All right, great, thank you.
Any questions about the schedule?
Let's get it done.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think that's it. Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Jeffrey.
Any, um, just reiterate the environmental goals for the public?
Yeah, happy to. Our facilities will be LEED certified as it is today. Uh, they're trending towards LEED gold, not committing to that, uh, but they will be LEED certified in a net zero energy, um, facility to include our existing maintenance hangar. We're bringing that up to a LEED certified facility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanna comment on that. You know, I think that's great, but I'm not such a big believer in getting the certifications rather than building the project right. So, but if you are choosing to go to the LEED's gold, I can understand, especially since the building is already one standard. But if for any reason you decide to change it, 'cause we just talked with our architects for the terminal and their goal is not necessarily to have a piece of paper, but to have a better building. So I think that could be worth discussing in the future if you decided to change your mind on that.
So much appreciate that comment. Thank you. It is a, it's a tremendous effort to make LEED. And it's an additional cost that sometimes takes away from what you can do elsewhere.
That's what my thinking is.
Uh, we, we're obligated by our lease to make it LEED certified and so we'll make sure that we hit those baseline standards. But again, a lot of what we're doing, just in good faith, design and effort, uh, we'll just naturally push it towards LEED gold.
It's also my understanding that you are, well, part of the county's new construction management plans. Requirements are, um, kind of recycling buildings rather than just demolishing. I know you have a lot of major logs, trees, wood in there. And I think there was part of the plan as to what you can reuse in the new structure, is that correct? I'm seeing heads shaking, yes?
We, we will reuse i- in a way, um, by not demolishing the existing maintenance hangar. And again, our lease allows us to do that. And so we chose to not create more waste in that area and instead bring it up to a LEED, um, baseline. The remainder of the facilities that will be removed, all of that's recycled or reused. Such as fuel farm tanks.
I'm thinking more about the terminal.
The, ah, the FBO.
Oh, your building.
The FBO building.
Okay.
Yeah.
And like those, the timbers and different things that are in there and different things. I, I, we've had these discussions. I think it, um, we've, we've gotta get more into the design and, and what that looks like, process.
You can reuse into the new structure or somewhere else.
Right, and, and how we can disassemble, we can, we can take the building apart in a way to use it in other areas. We, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet to be able to give you a solid answer, but, but that's the intent.
Yeah, 'cause you've got some beautiful logs in there.
Truly, yes.
What about the eagle structure, the, is there an eagle?
Yes, that's Dave.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think our COO was pretty clear.
He absolutely...
That bird's standing there on the ground.
That's what, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Are there questions, Jeffrey?
Good, thank you.
Ry, before we go to public comment, will you cover the amended language? We should consider for the resolution, please.
So the intent of the proposed change that I'm suggesting to the BOCC is simply that in your now-there-for language in your resolution, the BOCC adds some language directing that this, um, plan be included in the location and extent review process that the Picken County is going to be submitting to the Planning Commission for the overall redevelopment project. So that's the goal. I think that's pretty easy to accomplish by simply stating in the resolution that, that happened. I'm happy to draft some of that language now or I can add that in and submit it to the chair after the meeting for her review as long as that's in line with what the BOCC would like to do now. I'm, I'm happy to draft on the fly too, but it's simply, I think, a matter of adding one sentence.
I think I might, um, right now, the now-there-for is just one paragraph. And I wonder if it would help to maybe bullet it out with this point and then also the inclusion of the plan as a attachment to the resolution.
I think that's a good idea. Yes, I do recommend bulleting it out. So you'll see, one of the other resolutions I have in front of you has that strategy implemented and I think we should do that here. I do think that attaching, and that's a good catch, Chair. That makes sense to attach the plan that's submitted to the meeting today as part of what's gonna be submitted in the location and extent review process.
All right, further questions from the board, otherwise I'll go to public comment?
I guess I kinda just curious about what's inside the terminal? If somebody flies in here, what, what do they get in there? What's in there?
You should bring her to your terminal.
You should come visit me sometime.
It's very understated, Francie. It's very understated compared to what you might think.
Yeah, I just, I mean, is it a coffee pot or is it a restaurant or?
We've, we've got coffee pots and we've got a little cafe, um, but, uh, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's fairly simple what it is right now. We've got a lobby area for, for passengers to wait, um, for their aircraft or to, to, um, just gather in the lobby. We've got coffee and different, different things, drinks and, and things. We've got the, the restrooms, of course, uh, being that it's an airport, that's, that's a big deal. But, uh, but very, very much similar to what we currently have as far as, um, the amenities that we, we have. It, it, it allows us, uh, some additional space, um, and, and, um, and some operational space and, and just, uh, um, updates the environment. And so we, when the building was built thirty years ago, it was very residential, to be honest with you. It, it, uh, from, from every aspect of it. And, and so updating that would, will be really great, uh, for our, from our perspective and, and the employees that work there. It'll be great to get, uh, get those types of updates that we need to.
On the opposite for your charter services, I think are gonna be an improvement, which they fast forward as well.
Absolutely. Just general improvement.
Well, I will come visit you and see what you currently have.
That would be great. Looking forward to it.
All right.
Okay, um, Dan, I might ask you to scoot over. We'll make some space for public comment. Um, if we could please, if anyone wishes to comment on the fixed base operator, um, improvement plan submitted by Atlantic Aviation, now would be the time. All right, I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment on this. We've had some suggested amendments to the resolution. Is there any additional questions or discussion by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the proposed capital improvement plan submitted by Atlantic Aviation for the fixed base facility at the Aspen-Pantin County Sardi Field Airport.
Thank you.
With the changes.
I'll second the motion with the addition of language related to extent and location and the attachment of the plan as presented today. Um, I think that was all the amendments we had.
That's what I have.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Noting Greg's refusal.
I'm just gonna stay here, actually.
Okay. Okay. Maybe let's just take a two-minute break to get Greg Poshman back in the room and the next, you can get set up with your next team, Diane. All right, welcome back everyone to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners' regular session on Wednesday, November 19th. We are moving on to our individual consideration items. These are first readings, which will be set for a public hearing on December 3rd. The first one is our resolution setting initial airport rates and charges for the Aspen Picken County Airport. We have Airport Director Diane Jackson. Hi Diane.
Thank you, town commissioners. We are back in front of you for our first read on our annual rates and charges discussion. We were here November 6th with two different scenarios and I will let Brian and Jason, our colleagues from Ricondo kind of review what we went over for that. Staff had recommended the cost share option of 50%. We had since met with the stakeholders. They did have some concerns, obviously with the cost of landing fees that we knew. But it did go a long way to let them know that the commissioners were considering a 50% cost share of this year's pavement, which as a reminder is 6.8 million budgeted and that would be 3.4 million to them and the airport taking 3.4 million. So with that, Jason, Brian, I'll let you pull up your presentation and kind of go over the overview.
Thank you Diane and good afternoon everyone. It's good to be before you. As Diane indicated, this is the first read of the proposed calculated 2026 budget rates and charges for the Aspen Picken County Airport. This is a summary slide which we presented early November. It represents delineation of terminal rental rates for the terminal building comparing 25 to 26. The landing fees, again, that comparison 25 to 26. Fuel flowage fee and shared space for the airlines in the terminal building. There's also a column which represents the numerical change, dollar value change. The, as Diane indicated, meetings were held on the 13th of November with both general aviation stakeholders and the airline property representatives. Both meetings, the feedback received from staff and to Ricondo was concerned, particularly as it relates to the landing fees. And although we explained in that meeting with the stakeholders that the, the board is considering taking one half or doing a cost share of 50% for the terminal maintenance, I'm sorry, the airfield maintenance in 2026. Still represents over a 55% increase in the landing fees. As you can see here, the airline rate is scheduled to grow from $7.75 to $12.05. An increase of $4.30. General aviation is slated to increase from $9.18 to $13.76. An increase of $4.58. Following the stakeholder meetings that we held on the 13th, United Airlines did follow up with an email to Diane. Number one, expressing appreciation. That expression of appreciation was also made during the meeting itself. So the stakeholders are very grateful that County reached out and were at least coordinating these proposed changes with them. But United also indicated that that 55% increase is going to be difficult, in their words, to absorb. And that that rate, the resulting rate of $12.05 is on par with what they pay at airports like O'Hare, Newark and LaGuardia. They had, they, United had some specific ask related to how the fund balance is proposed to be used in the airport fund, how it's built up and what the plans of the county are in terms of its use for the modernization program. United and the other airlines also requested a five-year pro forma of rates and charges. So they have a general understa- will have a general understanding of what these rates may do between 2026 and 2031. And lastly, United requested that if possible, the board consider use of discretionary non-airline revenues like it has done for fiscal year '25 to further moderate that increase. We had very good discussion again with the airlines and the general aviation users. And, and I think as we, as was discussed by the board earlier this month, the 25 progress, excuse me, the 25 project, the runway maintenance project is approximately $2 million more than the 2026 program is slated to be. 6.4 million versus 8.6, I believe, was the comparative numbers for those years. I think when this matter was before you a year ago, there was concern about that marked increase of almost $9 million last year. So I think there was an extraordinary move or thought behind your decision to pretty much mitigate the cost of that project and absorb it through fund balance and use of discretionary use of non-airline revenues to, to keep rates essentially the same as they were in 2024. So now we fast forward 12 months. We're looking, you're looking at a situation where rates have not, landing fee rate has not changed now in two years. But it is still a 55% increase. So the, the mitigation, if you had not had that mitigation last year of the rates, the landing fee rate would have been $18.41 for the airlines. The GA rate would have been $19.85 to the airlines. So you could see with your efforts a year ago and use of your funds, you were able to moderate that. You're able to, your proposal this year to cost share 50% further moderates that, but you can also see the, the cost impact to that. We, regarding the five-year projections of rates and charges during the meeting, particularly with the airlines, there was, you know, an indication that A, the county has just received pretty much voter approval less than two weeks ago, or now just over two weeks ago, to borrow funds for the airport modernization program. So you were very early in, if you will, in terms of evaluating cash flow and in terms of evaluating affordability. And I, and, and our sense is that at this point in time, it's the board's desire to maintain its fund balance, keep a watchful eye on your fund balance. Because you have a very significant project that's going to be undertaken in the next four or five years, which is going to require use of that fund balance going forward. And so I think that's a lot of what's behind and the justification for the decision to cost share this year. I think the, the airlines and indeed general aviation stakeholders would appreciate sometime in the first quarter of 2026, an opportunity to, to have a meeting to review projections of rates and charges. I know you all would as well. I think that would be perhaps one takeaway from whatever decision you ultimately end up making regarding the 26 rates is that we do plan projections and we look at them based on the knowledge and information we have to date to, to go forward with that. So again, we tried to summarize here at a very high level the recommended rates and then also offer you a summary of the discussion with the airlines and the general aviation users from, from last week. So happy to answer any questions on any of this.
And if I may add, just for a second, before we take.
Did you add it just a little bit louder?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Francie.
No one in the back is going to hear from the microphone.
I may, I may add to that, that we did let all the stakeholders know we have been very thoughtful with this year's pavement program and prioritizing the areas that absolutely need to be done to keep the surfaces in operating condition and that we are not doing things that we don't have to do. I think that went a long way with them as well to understand that these are just things we have to do in order to get to that '27 closure. So we did a very good job at explaining that. And again, I want to reiterate that all the stakeholders were very thankful at your fact of, you know, your thoughts to 50% cost share with them.
Okay, questions? I think I said Jeffrey Hens first and then Greg.
So I look at Diane and John. So from a stakeholder standpoint, will we have rates and charges going out five years by Q1 as per the stakeholders' request? Given the potential bonding that may take place? Just to keep in the good graces of the stakeholders and honor that request.
I think we can communication open, John, with that too, but I also think there's something separate here too that the stakeholders did hear from us and that this may be a very different conversation when you have new pavement and we don't have to do six, seven, eight and ongoing locally funded projects. That it will all become federally eligible at that point, which is a very different conversation for this year and last year.
Understood.
And while we could provide projections, I think the, the one caution, it is based on actual incurred and sometimes those projections are taken a, a, a little bit more as a commitment than projections. And so just have some caution around that.
I want to follow up on that. So just what I'm hearing is no, we did not agree to United Airlines' request for a five-year pro forma. We have not. Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, I did, I wanted to follow up on that. Yeah, I don't think, it, it's great they can ask for the moon, right? But I don't think that that's something that we could offer them that really has much value. I'm, I, I know we want consistent air service here, but there's a disconnect for me. The, I understand this is the most lucrative flight, you know, route that United has in its entire system. I don't know if that's correct, but that's.
Important route to them.
It's very important to them. Why, why does the community have to pay for this is a question I'd love to spend more time answering. And we've had discussions about it before. You know, I think this is part of the cost of doing business. And of course they'd like someone else to pay for it. I understand, so would we. And it sounds like we're stepping up, but I'm just wondering, can we afford to step up to this extent? And, and back to the airport thing, the cost, the inflation of, construction inflation could bring the cost of this. This year's up beyond 6.8. I'll, maybe, maybe it will be at 6.8 million. I'll be surprised. But those are the sort of questions I, I think the board would want to dig into with the, certainly with the representatives, but then also from people from the community who, who might also ask, wait a minute, why are we having to pay for this right now? But it sounds like the problem will go away when we get a new runway. So anyway, I do have a lot of questions and I, and I wonder why, how did we get to this point where we're negotiating to only have to pay for half of it? Thank you.
Do you want me to take that one? Yeah, so Greg, it, it, it's a delicate answer and because I'm a short timer, I'm not going to give a delicate one.
You don't have to worry about it, right?
Yeah. Basically, in 2018, the board did have both environmental clearance and funding from the FAA to rebuild and repair the runway. At that time is a determination based on community values and such, but a determination of this board to pause on that and to have more public process. And that resulted in the, the vision committee. Then we had a little bit of delay. We had a small pandemic in the middle of that that really slowed everything down. But the deterioration in, in the runway really occurred and we would not be incurring these annual repairs. And so yes, we see it both as a cost of doing business, but recognizing it was also a consequence of, of decisions that we made to ensure we had more time for public process in this community. And so that's where we feel like there is some responsibility on our side.
Got it. Thanks. That's a good answer. Thank you. So, so that, that may be the unseen cost of the public process with a pandemic thrown in. Okay, I'm ready to move. Keep going.
Francie, you were next.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So if we chose scenario one, would we be above other airports on each of those?
Significantly.
Significantly. And if we choose scenario two, we're more in line with other airports?
We're still very high and in line with some of those that Brian had mentioned, larger airports, Orlando, Newark, Chicago. But I think that it gives the stakeholders a sense of understanding where we're at in the public process that John mentioned by the 50%.
Okay, and how much of these increases that we ask the airlines to pay per passenger will be passed on to the passengers?
So I think, and Brian, I'll let you in to this a little bit as well. That's a business decision for them. It's a cost of operating at the airport. Whether they pass that on or not is their decision, but it's a business decision on whether to operate if this market is still yielding or making them enough profit to keep operating what they're doing.
I mean, $7 per passenger is small compared to the price of a plane ticket out of Aspen, but I know that there are, we have constituents who are concerned about how we might be, how the BOCC and this project might be affecting their parking and rental rates and flight costs and all of that stuff, so had to ask.
I would say the airlines are a little separate from, say, our parking costs and other things in those passenger facility charges.
But if it does affect the price of a ticket, then it is related.
It can. That's a business decision on the airlines' part, but really it goes into their operating and what they're looking at is how much it costs. And I, we had the slide during the work session and I'm not sure if you have that available, Ryan, Brian, their cost of in plane passenger. Oh, okay. So.
Hold on, let me see.
That one is a, a good one to show you, Francie, to that, that point.
Sorry.
So it, it will increase their operating expenses here and that's what they were concerned with, with their email back to us. And I think that after a certain threshold for an airline, it automatically flags their finance to come back and ask these questions. They're just doing their due diligence as well. And again, I'd like to highlight the first sentence in their email to us was thanking the commissioners for their consideration for the 50%.
Patty?
Yeah, I just want, and I think I say this at every meeting, the public to know that we reevaluate these fees every year as we do with parking and cost for rental space within the terminal for our vendors there. And we, we take into consideration pass-through costs, even though we have no control over that. And, and we also take into consideration market. So what other airports, our size or not necessarily our size, are, are charging for square footage or for parking rates, et cetera, to try and balance it out. So that we're doing the best on behalf of our local citizenry and our users at the airport, our visitors, our local. our visitors, our locals who use the airport to fly in and out of. We take all that into consideration and I appreciate United wanting, you know, I mean, it's a business operation for them and I thank them for thanking us, for taking into consideration their concerns, but our job is to really represent the community and our airport. So I think we do a good job of that on an annual basis. So thank you.
You too, and thank you for mentioning that, Patty. I know that goes a long way even with our local pilots.
Yeah, thanks.
Any further questions? The public will have an opportunity to give us public comment on this at second reading on December 3rd. There's no further discussion? Is there a motion?
To move it on to second reading?
Yep.
I'll make motion to move it on to second reading, that being the resolution of the Board of County Commissions setting initial airport rates and charges for the Aspen, Picken County Airport Sardi Field for 2027.
Further discussion? Yes, Greg.
So are, are we going to have them come in and talk to us and, and discuss any more of this? It's just, it sounds like they want us, they want to have certainty about what they're going to be paying in the future. We want to fund our airport operations.
Who's that?
United, I think.
The United, the other airlines, maybe the GA people? Is, is this a conversation we should be having or is it not necessary at this point? But, or when will we hear from them?
They've all been welcome to second read. We have let them know the process with the B O C C. We let them know the work session that we would be coming to with two scenarios and just point of clarification, asking if you want us to bring both scenarios forward to second read or staff's recommendation of the 50% to second read.
Thank you.
And I, I would not recommend to the board making a multi-year commitment at this point until we have actual numbers.
Thank you. Yeah.
Jeffrey?
Just want to follow up. Is there a potential that United and/or Delta become partners in federal sort of advocacy and lobbying to bring back money? I mean, we haven't, so in other words, we haven't shown up in DC with them to this point or in Junction. But is there an opportunity to make a larger pitch and plea for groundside or airside funding?
There are some shared interests particularly around terminal funding and such. They, we're not the only airport, obviously, that, that they work with and so I don't know how they would balance that and how much advocacy they would put in. But the shared interest obviously is that for every grant dollar we get, that helps us lower the cost to, to our users.
They are interested in understanding our updates, but I do agree with John. They set that precedent unfortunately with one airport done. So they're very cautious with their public support of.
They'd be competing against themselves.
Further discussion? You have a motion in a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dan.
We'll discuss again on the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, guys. Nice to see you again. It was nice to see you here before.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, this is an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the B O C C and Community Health Services at the Michael E. Schultz Health and Human Services Building. Which staff is going to take this on? Why are you saying Kevin? It says Jody.
Kevin.
Kevin's in the building.
John, you can take it.
I think Jody is absent or sick.
So I don't have the AIS pulled up in front of me and I, I can pull that up with specific questions. And I talked just long enough for Kevin to get here, so.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi.
Welcome.
So you're presenting.
Kevin, as, as you are presenting, this might be your first regular meeting before us where we actually vote on things.
I believe it may be.
Great, welcome. So given that the two items are related, you're welcome to present on both of them at once if you wish. We will have to vote on them separately, but sometimes that's easier for staff, so we'll leave it to you.
I think that makes a lot of sense to you.
Okay, great.
So today, I don't have a presentation, but we do have two different ordinances that we're looking for. And the, the situation here is that we have two different lease renewals out at the Health and Human Services Building. One for Community Health Services and the other for Recovery, for Recovery Resources and very, both very similar in nature. So Community Health Services, we're looking at a, a lease renewal. They utilize just under 2,000 square feet of space, releasing that to them at a cost of $35 per square foot, which is an in-kind contribution, so it's not an actual cost to them, but a, an in-kind contribution of about $68,000 per year. And, and they are a nonprofit clinic. They provide affordable health service, preventive health services to, to, to members of the public. And so those are the basics of, of that particular lease and it's just, it's just expiring. We only do one-year leases at this time and so we're just in front of the board trying to, to get this renewed. They're in good standing with, with the county and with Health and Human Services and they, they recommend that we move forward with the lease renewal. Recovery Resources, very similar. The only real difference there is about 1,700 square feet, so the in-kind contribution is a little bit less, to write under $60,000 per year. And they do have a shared office space at the courthouse as well as the, the space over here to, again, try to help folks that might need that service over there. So those are the, you know, the recommendation here is to, to, to move this forward for a second reading. I believe that second reading would be on the 3rd of December. And open for questions.
Nice job. Thank you. Questions for Kevin? Go ahead, Greg.
I don't know, Kevin, if you're ready to answer this, but I'm, I'll look to Kara or John. How do we set the rate? And it's an in-kind contribution, there must be some accounting magic behind this and we have to put a rate on it. How do we choose that rate? And is it, is it even close to any sort of market rate?
Okay, this gives me another chance to give another one of those answers where it, it is not a free market rate. We, we try and take account of what's happening in the rental market. We do have a broker, Sally Sheikman Miller, that we consult from time to time on rental rates. But I think the art is then making an adjustment for a public use building. And, and we've had these types of negotiations, for example, in the other direction when we've been negotiating on the, like, Mountain Family Health lease and value of that for what other entity should be contributing based on our in-kind. And so you'll find these generally to be far below what would be retail or, or office rental square footage prices, but because the building is limited in use, like, we are not in a free market in the Schultz Building, we've tried to account for that. And also, you know, give a, a, a reasonable reporting for the public of what the value is of, of the resource that we're giving. There are no dollars actually exchanging hands. We are providing these basically subsidized lease rates because these partners are important to us achieving our goals. So I don't know if that answers the question. We, there's, there's a lot of art in it.
I knew it was discount, but why? Why that number? But it doesn't, just maybe it's just arbitrarily set.
You know, we, we kind of used the rate that we had negotiated around Mountain Family Health at 123 Emma Road and escalated that for being closer to the Aspen Center. But Greg, there's a, there's a lot of guessing involved in coming up with this rate, in all honesty.
Does it reflect the actual cost of operation and nowhere near? Okay. Good to know that, though. Thank you.
Further questions?
Yeah, and just to clarify, it wouldn't reflect the actual, like, operating, sure, but not like depreciation or cost of the building or replacement, all that stuff put together, it's, it's not close. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So the follow-up to Greg's question, is there any advantage in increasing the rate to demonstrate an increased in-kind vis a vis grant writing or anything we're looking to receive from state or federal government demonstrating, here's what we're donating locally?
We don't really get a reimbursement, like, through human services and such. It's more how it's reported in our certified annual financial report. But there's no, again, dollars changing hands now. If there, there, there may be, I guess, the, the question that I don't know that we fully explored, Jeffrey, is if there's a benefit to the nonprofits, on the other hand, to showing a greater in-kind and, and that could be a discussion we could bring back to the, I think the pod is what we call it. Yeah.
No, I'd, I'd appreciate a follow-up on that.
Yep.
Thanks.
Both, both, both on the county side as well as the nonprofit side, given sort of the fiscal uncertainty in human services.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we will vote on these separate individually and set both for a public hearing on December 3rd. Is there a motion to approve an ordinance approving a lease between B O C C and Community Health Services?
So moved.
Greg? Thank you, Francie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the B O C C and Recovery Resources?
So moved.
Thank you, Francie. Thank you, Greg. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good job jumping in there.
Good job there.
Okay.
Kevin?
Moving on to public hearings and then we will take a little break before land use and our special meeting at 2:00. Let's see, we have a resolution of the B O C C approving an intergovernmental agreement between the B O C C and the Aspen Fire Protection District for services with our fleet department.
Gosh, we haven't seen you in so long.
See you guys every day. Slam dunk here for you. Matt Bertrister, the fleet manager, here for the second reading of the renewal of the Aspen Fire contract for us continuing to service their trucks.
All right, it seems compatible at this time, so that's great. Patty, question?
Yeah, I was out there the other day and there was a fire truck in there getting worked on and it was bright red and shiny. It was great. So thank you for doing that. I like the cooperation we can do with our, with our fellow agencies here in the valley. I think it's great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Further questions on this? How long is this agreement for?
This is a one-year extension with up to five years total, so 2030 we do that.
I'm confused. Is it one year or is it five years?
Well, it's a five-year total, yeah.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Roll it over every year.
Yeah, yeah, got it. All right, is there anyone online who may wish to give public comment or anyone in the room? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion, please.
I'll make a motion if you want.
Please.
To approve a intergovernmental agreement between the B O C C and the Aspen Fire Protection District for services.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item number eight, a resolution, oh, we're gonna, well, a resolution authorizing a site agreement between Picken County and Pano AI Inc. for the installation of fire detection equipment at the Thomasville Telecommunications Site. It looks like there is a request to continue this item. Attorney Ryan Neely, can you, do you want to tell us why we need to continue this and then I will open the public comment before we continue?
Sure. The, we've reached an agreement with Pano, the agreement, and I believe Drew's not around to present it today, so that's why we're moving it forward.
All right. We did hear this at first reading and we're supportive then and we'll look forward to reviewing it again on the 3rd. Is there anyone in the room or online that wishes to make a comment on this before I have a motion to continue? Okay, seeing none, we will, is there a motion to continue consideration of this resolution and the public hearing to December 3rd?
So moved.
Thanks, Patty. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Well, we are going to move to land use. Why don't we go ahead and take, how about an eight-minute break? Does that sound okay to everybody? And we will get started. All right, we'll be back in eight minutes. Thank you. All right, welcome back everyone to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners' regular session on Wednesday, November 19th. We are moving on to our land use items. Um, we have an item here, a resolution approving the Cordova GMQS exemption and special review for an attached care, caretaker dwelling unit. That looks like there's been a request to continue to January 14th. Um, any information about the continuation you wish to share?
Um, we, the applicant is going to prepare more detailed information about-
Ms. Michael?
Oh, red light on, yeah.
Hi.
Nicole, we're at Community Development. Uh, the applicant's preparing more detailed information about the water right for that second dwelling, um, and we hope to have that in front of you in January.
Okay, well, since it is noticed as a public hearing, we will see if anyone wishes to make public comment on the item or the request to continue. Okay, seeing none, um, is there a motion to continue this to January the 14th?
So, so moved, I'd moved.
Thank you, Greg.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, we will talk about Cordova in January. All right, item number 10, this is a resolution of the BOCC granting approval for 3PK Starlit LLC Activity Envelope and Site Plan Review and Restoration or Expansion of Non-Conforming Structure With Significant Changes. And before we get started, I will, I've, I've spoken with staff and applicant, but, um, just for everyone else, we have noticed a special meeting at 2:00 to take up our, um, resolution to appoint interim county manager and so we will take a break in the middle of this item to do that special meeting and then resume our conversation at that time. Greg?
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, uh, this is gonna, this seems like a lot to deal with and, and it seems like there are issues that are unresolved and have been on this for so long. I'm just concerned that you're all ready to come to us with this. I would just flat out say it, I'm looking at the, looking at what I've seen, it's like, whoa. I don't want to say anymore, but, but I'm just concerned and I wanted to invite the opportunity to say what you want to say now because I think this is gonna be, uh, a complicated and drawn-out thing with a lot of detail, like many are, but I just thought I'd share that.
And I guess I would say, in keeping with past practice, we always have the opportunity to continue, um, an item if we need further information or wish to take further time to consider our decision on it.
Correct, yeah, thank you. That was what I wanted to say.
Okay, great. Um, all right, if anyone, there's no comments currently from the board, we'll go ahead and turn it over to staff for presentation on this land use application, please.
Thank you, Franco Palumbo, Community Development, Picken County. This is the application for 3PK Starlit LLC. I'll try to get this done by two, but no guarantees. I did ask you all a additional comment that I received from Roaring Fork Fire and Rescue, Brooke Scott. She, um, I just wanted to, maybe I'll just read it out loud, so, so that's on the record. And so I asked Brooke Scott, uh, just a clarifying question, um, if the owners are able to locate and install a dry hydrant with a water storage tank, that being 10,000 gallons in proximity to the residence, do they still need to sprinkle the additions? And Brooke Scott's response is, no, I would be fine with 10,000 gallon tank and a firetruck turnaround unless they're going to gut the house and there, and there is opportunity to sprinkle the entire house. So just wanted to put that on the record and, and let you guys all be aware of, uh, additional comments. So I'll start my presentation and share screen briefly.
So this comment was in our record?
That one did not, I posted the packet last week and I received that comment last Tuesday, so I just missed publishing, so.
On the very last page.
Yeah, last page, I, I highlighted it.
Okay, but, but the, the letter you-
The letter, the letter and everything else, I just-
Confused, I'm like, this letter matches this letter, okay, thank you.
I wanted to guy, give you all the fire comments and-
Patty, can you make sure your mic is on?
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, I have, uh, next to me, the applicant's representative, Sarah Oats, and I believe the, the applicants are in the audience, so if you guys have any questions after my presentation, um, they'd be willing to help and, and answer those for you. So the subject property is, uh, just off of, uh, Capital Creek Road in the old Snowmass area. It's, uh, part of the Capital Woods subdivision. There is, this diagram on the left is the six lot subdivision. This was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 1972 and, and the focus lot is Lot 2 of that subdivision. And all those lots in that subdivision has been improved with some sort of residential dwelling unit. The, uh, property is zoned R30, um, and is conforming with the zone district and the property is located within the valleys of Capital Creek and Lower Snowmass Creek Master Plan Overlay Zone District. The request for this property is an activity on open site plan review and typically those are reviewed administratively and then with the kind of encumbrances on the property, restoration and expansion of a non-conforming structure with significant changes is a BOCC review type, so that's why it's in front of you all today. The specific development on the property is construction of an approximately, I'm sure the architects have a better number than me, uh, of 1,011 square feet of additional floor area to the existing legal non-conforming structure. The, uh, existing legal non-conforming structure is approximately 4,167 square feet, that's a single-family dwelling unit. And the proposed residential floor area for the new single-family dwelling unit is approximately 5,178 square feet. Uh, existing, the, the applicant is also, uh, requesting that the existing improvements on the property, that being the two pedestrian bridges spanning Capital Creek, the 108-square-foot extract, accessory dome structure and a 129-square-feet shed to remain on the property. So that kind of brings into the, the approximate, uh, second floor addition is 780 square feet. The, uh, first floor addition is approximately 231 square feet. And so the total, uh, floor area for the property, including the dome, is 5,286 square feet and with the shed, it's 5,415 square feet total on the property. So the, so the, uh, again, this process, activity on open site plan is administrative reviewed, we, we review it, staff reviews it against chapter seven of the land use code and then with, uh, this property, um, having, uh, site-specific development plans for restoration, expansion of non-conforming structure or use with significant changes, that's conducted by the BOCC. And so pursuant to, uh, Code Section 95030, uh, the BOCC may permit modifications to a non-conforming use or structure that does not meet the standards of 95020 of the code. So, looking at kind of what's been going on, what's the ask? That purple highlighted area is the previously approved, uh, originally building envelope in 2006. This is prior to our adopted, uh, 2006 current land use code. So that was approved as a building envelope with some other envelopes onsite, utility envelope, access envelope for Starlit Lane. And then the application was amended in 2008 administratively, so they still had their three-year vesting from 2006. And then, uh, this property went through a, got, denied a, I'll, I'll read it a little bit clearer, just so I get everything right. Yeah, in 2008, a building permit for the residence, uh, was, uh, approved, um, and, and given to the property owner, um, but then was abandoned and then in 2009, the vesting had expired from that 2006 approval. So then in 2012, the, uh, property owner came back and asked for, uh, that same approval, but because, uh, the land use code had changed from 2006 to 2012 regarding, uh, stream setbacks now being 100 feet, uh, that was ultimately denied by the Community Development Director. So in 2013, the BOCC approved a resolution, uh, finding a taking and remediating the taking for the activity and site plan on the property. So the BOCC remediated that taking by allowing, uh, the original development, uh, that was approved in 2008 to be developed and that was a 5,285-square-foot single-family residence. And the structure had to stay substantially similar to what was approved back in 2008. And, um, and, and during that time, that dome structure and those two pedestrian bridges were a part of those 1041 and site plan approval from, uh, the administrative decisions and the BOCC resolution. So that's some interesting background on this property. So the proposed additions, uh, in red highlighted are that approximately 231 square feet on the lower floor. Um, it's kind of along that sidewalk strip in this, uh, let's see if I can get the cursor, this lower area right here. And then the other addition is pretty much enclosing this, uh, entryway right here. And those additions are approximately 60 feet, uh, at its closest point to the ordinary high water line to Capital Creek. The second addition is, excuse me, uh, the light blue right here and that's approximately 780 square feet and that's over the existing footprint of the single-family residence. And you kind of see it in these renderings, uh, above the existing garage right there and you kind of see a, a three-dimensional rendering of the proposed house, I believe, from Capital Creek Road. And that addition, uh, at its closest point will be 31 feet, uh, to the, at the closest point to the, uh, Capital Creek's ordinary high water line. So the accessory structures, we have a couple on this property that the applicant is requesting to remain. You have the dome structure, you have the shed, and then you have these two, uh, pedestrian bridges that go over Capital Creek. And, uh, I don't have the image, but the images in your packet, there is conduit affixed to these, uh, pedestrian bridges that run from the existing well on the property to the, uh, single-family residence. The shed, according to and what we've looked up, uh, to the Picken County GIS Department, they provided, uh, satellite imagery all the way back to 1991. And that shed looks like it was put in place around, uh, 2014 through 2017 based on that satellite imagery and, and there's no permit on file within, uh, the COM Dev Department. Although there is no file, uh, permit on file for that dome structure as you see in the left-hand side. That was, uh, at the very least, uh, recognized in those 1041 and activity envelopes that were approved in 2006, 2008, and in 2013. Am I doing on time? Okay.
You're okay.
Chapter seven, so of course, activity on open site plan has to be reviewed against chapter seven of the code and, uh, for the most part, the, uh, activity on open site plan are compliant with the provisions of chapter seven. Uh, a note that we did receive, uh, regarding the down here, public services and utilities from our environmental health department is regarding, the applicant did have a, uh, request to have a fifth bedroom in the residence. Um, but again, the existing OWTS onsite wastewater treatment system is, uh, non-compliant with the existing standards that we have today. And so any sort of replacement is, uh, what the environmental health had said is not allowed or permitted. There is allowance for repair, but an additional, uh, OWTS is, is rated for, the, the OWTS is rated for four bedrooms, um, so if there is a fifth bedroom, that would have to be, uh, repaired and, and so that is something that, uh, or expanded is what the environmental health department had said and that's something that they would not permit. The, um, I'll make sure we're on the right area. Yeah, so now we're looking at the, specifically the highlighted area, river and stream corridors and wetlands. And so again, this is the one that, uh, is not compliant with that code section and so that's why we're kind of moving over towards that non-conforming code section in chapter nine. But just to bring up why it's not compliant is, again, in 2006, uh, the land use code was, uh, the new land use code was adopted and we had approved this 100-foot riparian setback and Capital Creek running through this property. And Capitol Creek running through this property kind of created this nonconforming in a ways when this code was adopted. So the, I should have brought it up in the other imagery, but the orange dash line right here is the existing 50-foot stream setback from the ordinary high water line. The green line here and down here is the Zone A, SFHA, Special Flood Hazard Area by FEMA, Zone A Flood Hazard. So as you could see, the property is encumbered by both floodplain and the existing riparian setbacks. So that's why we're moving on to chapter nine. The application does not meet chapter nine, section 95020, restoration without significant changes. And so therefore, the application is reviewed against 95030 of the land use code. Again, on this image right here, you can see, this is from Picken County GIS, they got the mapped kind of center line of the creek. And then you show over top of that, the 100-foot riparian buffer. And then the right imagery is the existing Zone A floodplain hazard by FEMA. And so looking at this code section, a site-specific analysis has to show, hey, is there no developable area on the property? And when you look at it, there is no way to avoid that floodplain hazard area.
Sorry, where are the blue again? The ordinary high water line and the setback?
This one? This image? This is the center line of Capitol Creek. And then this blue outline area is the buffer, so the 100-foot riparian setback that GIS has provided, Picken County GIS has provided for us.
And then do we know where the ordinary high water line is related to this?
Um, yeah.
Somewhere between the two.
The green, the green.
Yeah, the 100-foot setback, yeah.
That's okay. I'm just trying to think about how they work together.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's not from the center line, it's from the ordinary high water line. I'm not sure how well GIS kind of displays that information, but.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing about, you know, also kind of reviewed in 95020, the land use code, is not just the site-specific analysis that has to avoid steep slopes, floodplain hazards, geologic hazards, severe wildfire hazard, and wildlife habitat, which, as you see in this image on the right, is not avoiding that floodplain hazard. The, you know, another thing that needs to happen within section 95020 is that the environmental health needs to, you know, say that the OWTS is adequately sized. And so again, the applicants are recommending a five-bedroom. And a four-bedroom is what the existing system is rated for. The applicants, I guess the final permit was never closed out, it's in your referral comments from environmental health, the final permit for the OWTS was never closed out. And so the applicants are working with environmental health to figure out a way to remediate that and work on a maintenance contract and operating permit because it is a kind of a special system that was developed on the, on the property.
Can you point it out to us?
Yeah. So the OWTS, the leach field is in that upper, if my cursor moves just to the right. Oh, wait, that's because it's right around here.
Okay. On the property across the road.
On the property across the road. And if we look at, this is the, the envelope right here for that system.
Thank you.
Can I ask, is there room for expansion in that envelope to accommodate five bedrooms?
So we cannot, because we do not meet the 100-foot setback, riparian setback, it cannot be expanded. So we have since come up with a design that satisfies environmental health, that we will only have four bedrooms, not five bedrooms, so.
Thank you. Please, Francie.
And the design doesn't expand the footprint of the house, right? It just goes up with a few rubs above what's already existing? Isn't that correct?
There's that 281 square-foot expansion. So in this red area, that's the first-floor expansion. And then that light blue is the second-floor expansion. So the majority of the expansion is above.
Not making it have a larger footprint. And part of that first floor is that front porch or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, yeah, it's this area where the front porch is, right here, that small little square. And then basically where this overhang is and this kind of sidewalk area from the driveway to the garage, that areas, those are the two areas that are expanded on that first floor.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
We'll go right up till two.
Just quickly then, 95020, it's, it does not meet, the application does meet the section of 95030, so it doesn't meet 95020, so then it gets bumped up to you guys, 95030. It meets this section of the code, no adverse impacts in county, no adverse impacts, and it meets the county land use policies. And chapter one of the land use code is consistent with the master plan of Pickle Bowl, which is the valleys of Capitol Creek and Lower Snowmass Creek master plan. And there's no riparian habitat that is contemplated to be removed as part of this application. The building code standards, hardships, and improvements to function and appearance, again, to the maximum extent feasible, the application is making a good faith effort to improve the function of the single-family residence. And then the last section of this code, development exactions and impact fees, all required exaction fees will be calculated and due at time of building permit, which is pretty standard. And conditions, this one may be a little bit loaded for the minute remaining, but these are them.
Well, why don't we use that as our stopping point? And we'll come back.
We'll give you more time.
Yes, we have, we have plenty of time this afternoon to continue considering this application. And I will, we are just going to take a brief break from our discussion of the resolution granting approval for the 3PK Starlet LLC activity envelope in order to conduct our special meeting. And let's see, how did we notice it? So we have all the right people here for this? All right, I'm going to invite Kara Silbernagle to come on up and sit with us, please. So at this time, we are going to hold a special meeting for one reading informal resolution in consideration of appointing Kara Silbernagle as our interim Picken County manager. And before we formally do that, we're going to take a moment as the board and acknowledge our current longstanding county manager, John Peacock, for all of your work and service over the last 15 years. You've been the only county manager I've worked with since my time at Picken County as staff and on the board. And we're going to have lots of celebrations and times to fet you between now and mid-December. But thank you so much for everything you have done and your mentorship and training of Kara as she has come up through Picken County as well. And so, let's see, I should, let's make a statement here. So for the public's benefit, Kara has been with Picken County since 2014 and came to us as a best and brightest intern from the University of Colorado's Masters in Public Administration program. And then advanced through her leadership roles in the county to policy analyst and assistant to the county manager, and a promotion to deputy county manager since 2020. And now we are appointing her as a board in response to John's resignation and moving on to bigger and better things and better work-life balance over in Winter Park as our interim county manager to take the helm and lead us through these next coming months while the board figures out what a permanent county manager role will best serve the community in the coming years. And I will invite fellow commissioners, if you wish to make any comments at this time, and then I'll turn it over to Kara if you have any statement you'd like to make as well. Greg, go ahead.
Sure, no, thank you, no, thank you for allowing me to go. First of all, I want to thank John, who's also the only county manager I've ever worked with, so I can say he's the best. But I think he, I suspect he is the best. And that's what has been reaffirmed over the years. And so it's bittersweet to see you go, but we support you in your next phase. And I want to say, I know, John, you've left a very deep bench, you've built an incredible staff, and Kara as our, as the appointee is stepping into a position where I think they'll, she'll succeed very well. It's just, I'm enthusiastic about this, excited, and I cannot wait for the community and the staff to get to know Kara as we do, as this board does, and understand just how capable, affable, and fun she is to work with. So thank you and welcome, Kara.
Thank you, Greg. Patty?
Well, I can't say that you're the first county manager I've ever done. But I can say I appointed you when you first came to Picken County. So thank you for taking the job on. We did have a little separation there when I took some time off, but I came back and I knew you would be here. And I just want you to know how much we appreciate all you've done for the county. And please remember, we know how to get to Winter Park.
Absolutely.
So you, if you don't get over this way, we're going to come visit you over that way. So thank you, John.
Thank you.
And take care and be safe. I'll remind you of that frequently.
Any other comments at this time? Francie?
Yes, I just want the public to know that John is a compassionate leader, which is not always an easy thing to do with a staff of almost 400 people. I think pretty much everybody who works for him recognizes that. And he's also a visionary, so a lot of the exciting things that have happened from Picken were sort of germinated by John's imagination and vision. And so, you know, I thank you, John, for everything you've done for the county and for making my first five years about 100 times better than they would have been without you. And Kara, welcome. Kara has also been amazing for the last five years that I've been here and really amazing to work with. I know her work with Vision 2050 and holding the Community Growth Committee together was no easy task, 26 people with disparate points of view. And my son, who was on that committee, told me that it was because of her that they were able to come to consensus and make recommendations, and that is saying a lot. So I look forward to your leadership as well, Kara.
Kelly, can I add something? I'm going to add something real quick.
Sure.
I also, here when Kara first came on board, so I've seen her transition, so I'm excited to see the next step in your, in your history, in your longevity, and your care for Picken County.
Okay, thanks, Patty. All right, I'll go to Kara then.
Okay, well, first of all, commissioners, thank you. This comes very bittersweet, so I wasn't going to go here, but I'm probably going to cry. I have to tell all of you because I don't think you know the story of how I came to Picken County. I only applied for one place, for the best and brightest program. I don't know if I can do this. And it was Picken County, and it was because of this community, and it was because of the county manager that was here. And I said, I'm either going to try local government, or I'm going to go get a PhD and do a think tank because I want to make an impact. And he was like, you should really come to Picken County. And he has not been wrong. And so it is extremely bittersweet, but I'm so happy for him on a personal level. I've learned so much, and he has set this community and this organization up for success. And I am so honored to be able to step into the interim role, and it's also because of the leadership that is throughout this organization, being able to work with you and the depth all throughout that we will be able to continue the strong work that you've set in motion. I don't think we're going to skip a beat, there might be some disruptions, but we are going to do great things. And I look forward to continuing through the next several months with all of you and helping you all set up with whatever the next county manager looks like, because I as well have not worked for any other county manager except for John Peacock. So, thank you. I very much appreciate the trust, the confidence, and the support from all of you, and really look forward to being out and working with the community and the staff and getting to know people in a new way and what may come.
Thanks, Kara.
Thank you.
You should look at the support behind you.
Oh, my God.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Well, who would like to make a motion?
I would like.
To approve the resolution of the BSCC, appointing Kara Silbernagle as our interim Picken County manager.
I would like to make that motion with great honor.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
All right, here we go.
All right, you chapter.
Did we ever, should I leave?
I forgot to say, he's not leaving today. No one let him leave today.
You are not done yet, dude.
We haven't approved his departure anyway yet, so we've got some time.
Do we have to adjourn a special meeting? I think you want to get, you want to get a picture?
Allison, did you want a photo? Okay.
Do you want to get all of us?
Why don't you come join all of us up here?
Come on, John.
John?
Kara?
I know, don't you do that.
Stop weeping.
Here, John and Kara, why don't you guys come stand in the middle?
I'm going to cry.
It's allergies for me.
There's no allergies in November time.
You want us closer together?
There must be something in your eye.
Scoot, scoot.
That's great.
We're going to move in closer to Kara.
Picture the picture.
I know. We'll trust Allison to edit this well.
You guys getting your photos.
Suck it in, Greg.
It looks like we're really.
Don't go over our shoulders.
Thank you.
All right, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, thank you guys for giving us that time.
Congratulations.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Patty, thank you, Greg. All in favor of adjournment of the special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Nine-minute special meeting, wow.
I know, maybe that's a short one.
Thank you.
Maybe not the shortest ever, but, all right, thank you, everyone. We are going to resume our regular board meeting. And we will, I will, we will have more opportunities to celebrate John before he leaves.
We're not done with you yet.
Who?
We know Picken County likes a good party, so we'll plant some in there. And then, okay, we're going to resume our discussion of requests for approval of the 3PK Starlet LLC activity envelope and site plan review and restoration of expansion of nonconforming structure with significant changes. And we were on the slide with the conditions recommended for resolution of approval that has been proposed to us today.
Thanks for the recap. Okay. I hope I don't.
We'll get you back on track.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, so conditions, these are in the resolution, I can just read them to you. But like, all residential development shall be captured in the activity envelope, and Starlet Lane shall be captured in the access envelope. Demonstrate, and this is staff's recommendation for conditions, demonstrate the shed, that I believe it's 129-square-foot shed to be removed from the property within 90 days of the approval. Some reasons why behind that is back from the 1972 BSCC-approved subdivision plat, there is a, this is highlighted right here, residential structure prohibited south of Capitol Creek. And as we have seen in the site plan, that shed is south of Capitol Creek. And there is a provision in the code, it's a long one, 72080A4B, that does allow for the redevelopment or restoration of development within riparian setbacks, so bringing back some sort of development to its riparian state is allowed development. And another thing is work with Roanoke Fire and Rescue Authority and the plan. Fire and Rescue Authority, and the planning, the county planning engineer, to explore installation of a water storage tank in proximity to the single-family dwelling unit, to the maximum extent feasible. And if that installation is not feasible, additions to be sprinkled. This is a comment that is, again, made by Brooke Scott and the fire authority. Flood plane development permit is required for all development. That's within the flood plane, which is almost everything. And if the foot bridges are destroyed by a flood event, the bridges will be required to be reconstructed according to the code in effect at the time. Again, a typical flood event, I believe it's, a typical flood event will inundate those bridges. And, and I believe they're not kind of really attached to the ground. Those abutments aren't really attached to the ground, so they could always wash out, and they won't create additional flood hazards to the property if they just wash And so, again, you guys in the packet have all the referral comments from these agencies, caucuses, and county staff. And staff recommendation is the BOCC approved the resolution for the 3PK Starlit LLC, granting activity open site plan review, and restoration or expansion of non-conforming structure with significant changes. And I could take any questions. Applicants' rep right next to me, Sarah Oats, could take any questions. And I know the owners are in the audience as well, and they could probably take any questions, if you have any. So, thank you.
I know I have a few. Anyone else? I'll start. Who issues the flood plane permit?
The county flood, flood plane administrator, who's one of the same county flood plane, county planning engineer.
Okay. And you mentioned restoration. Is there a restoration contemplated for anywhere on the site currently?
No restoration is contemplated in this application.
Got it. Okay. Those were my questions. Jeffrey?
So, backing up for one second.
Oh, it's all, sorry.
She's just used to saying that.
I'm a neighbor on Lut Hill Road. And so, we've had three, welcome, we've had three fires in the past couple of months. Structure, grass, and the third was, I'm blanking, oh, a Mercedes Sprinter van. So, the, the current GIS maps are generally out of date relative to the state of Colorado, and there's concern, I think, from the community in terms of ingress egress, as well as sprinkling of additions of structures. So, the question for the applicant is if you're adding 780 feet, you're basically ripping the roof off, and adding 780 square feet, why wouldn't you just agree to fully sprinkler the entire structure? So, again, sort of community concerns about ingress egress, as well as, I know, I know Starlet pretty well. It's, it's pretty narrow where you're building.
That was not an ask by the fire department.
Yeah.
So, it was to sprinkler the addition, or to provide the water tank, which cannot be accommodated on-site. There was a requirement, which you may have seen in the notes, from 20, whenever, whenever this long saga of building.
The former one was fully sprinkled.
And, and there was a requirement, it was supposed to be sprinklered, and, you know, they cut back the structure from a two-story to a one-story, and it dropped it under 5,000 square feet. So, I'm not sure how, that's how it eked by. But they did receive a certificate of occupancy for, for the structure, which would have included an inspection from the fire department, for whatever reason. So, you know, we're willing to sprinkler the addition, because, again, that's the ask from the fire department.
And the tanks?
No, we're, we cannot accommodate the tanks on-site.
So, you're going to use your existing well permit to sprinkler?
The addition.
The addition?
Yes.
Which is covered by DNR?
Yes.
Can I tag on to that?
Please, Patty.
So, and I'm going to look at the county attorney also. Because of the complications of this site, because of wildfire issues, because of water availability and space to put a tank in, this is a perfect opportunity for them to, for the owners, to sprinkle the whole house. The fire department's not really comfortable in partial sprinkler systems, and ingress egress safety issues for first responders. I know it's not necessarily required, but can we ask of, or, I mean, how can we, I would like to see the entire structure sprinkled. This is an opportune time to do it. You're going to be ripping, you know, it's not like we're telling you to rip out drywall, because you're probably going to be doing major remodels on this existing residential structure anyway. It's a perfect opportunity for safety of the people in that home, safety of family members in that home, and safety of the neighborhood. So, I personally, I don't know if the rest of the board hasn't weighed in, would like to see the full structure sprinklered. I just don't know how we get there.
I just added, and I think it's helpful, which is, the last structure loss we just had, we had three, we had water from Lazio, McCabe, and Fire Hydrants. So, Roaring Fork Rural showed up with tenders. So, all three were required for a single structure fire. So, there's massive concern in the community regarding ingress egress, as well as water availability. And it was demonstrated through that full structure loss, that thankfully didn't spread to the two other structures on one acre lots. So, I think it should be a strong consideration of the applicant.
Francie?
I just wanted to add on to that. It's a little weird to think that there's no water available when we have 100 pictures of Capitol Creek running through this property. Is it absolutely impossible, if there's a fire there, to pump out of Capitol Creek?
I don't know the answer.
Francie, I will, I was not in attendance with the fire department. So, Zoe Weinberg, who's the architect on the project, I think can address, first of all, the scope of the remodel, and the feasibility of sprinkling it, and what the discussion was around pumping out of, I know there was an offer for the pond, and the concern is, the waters may not always be there. So, I think they probably discussed that, and she, she can address that, you know, when we get to that point.
Come on out.
Yep, all right. So.
Because you're, you're not planning to do a presentation, right?
Well, so Franco, I told Franco that I did an AI-generated PowerPoint presentation, because I'm incapable of, I mean, it's just tedious to do them, and he wanted to see it. But I don't feel it's necessary to do the presentation. We're happy to just jump in and, and address these concerns. So.
Okay. Hi, I'm Zoe. Nice to meet you guys.
Franco, maybe you could pull up the site plan?
Yeah.
And just make sure your, I think your mic is on, but red light on.
Red light has to be on.
It's on.
So, I guess while we're doing this, I just did want to introduce, so Zoe is from FNM Architects, and she's the architect, along with Lynn Stewart-Savory. And then Towns and Kathleen Pressler are the owners, and they are back here as well in attendance in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I met with the fire department on-site, and we looked at possible locations for the water storage tank, which would be about 10,000 gallons. And after walking the site with her, we didn't, we're not able to find any locations that were going to work. And we talked to her about the creek and the ponds, and asked the same question, would we be able to use this for water use, to be able to put out a fire? She said, no, the water is irregular. You can't completely rely on it. You know, come winter, the creek freezes. We don't think there's going to be a fire in the winter. But, again, it's not a reliable source. And then, in terms of locating the tank on-site, just based on distance that she needed the water tank to be from the house, and in relation to the roads, we weren't able to find any. We looked at putting a water tank on the neighboring property, as that would be the only location available. We reached out to the neighbor. She said she's not interested in doing that. So, our only option left was to sprinkle the addition, which the owners who are here behind me were more than happy to do. It makes sense. And we can fit a water tank for the fire suppression on-site for 37 Starlet easily. In terms of fire suppress, fire suppressing the whole house, feasibility, I would say would come down, you know, well, to cost. And if the owners were interested in doing that, I don't want to speak to them, but I think that, or for them, but I think that's something they would be open to discussing. But I think we could look at an option where we suppress the entire house.
Okay, further questions on this topic? Greg?
I don't know, questions or comment, the concern certainly, the sprinkling, the lack of access and egress, lack of fire truck turnaround, lack of water storage, proximity to the, to the creek, understanding this is a constrained site. Boy, I'll talk about a constrained site, but it's a beautiful site. What a location. I would have built a house there if I could have, you know?
Yep.
It's a beautiful spot. The thought of expanding it, when we're trying to protect rivers, and, and protect water quality in our rivers, and we're trying to be very, very thoughtful about fire mitigation, especially for the neighborhood, the neighbors above, Jeffrey being one of the first, the first houses, right at the top of the hill. I understand his concern. We have to do better. And that's where my concern is. And to say, well, God, it just doesn't seem possible. Okay, then perhaps this isn't the right thing to do with this property at this point, at this time in expansion. That, that's where I am. And so, I just wanted to raise that red flag. We're going to have to do something heroic in order to make this work here. And we're going to have to convince everybody that expanding a house this close to a stream isn't, isn't a problem for, for the riparian area downstream or elsewhere, in the event of a fire, or something else. You know, I'd liked, I'd be, I guess I'd like to have healthy rivers and streams weigh in on, on, on this. It seems like we need, we need more people's eyes on this. Maybe there's a way to get to where you want to go, but too many big questions for me. And, and perhaps I just need to play catch-up, or, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned, you know? The house is big enough right now to be so close to the river, is what I'm thinking. How do you add on and, and maintain or improve protection for fire, water quality, stuff like that? Those are, that's where I am.
I have a question, too. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to tag on to Greg. So, of the three fires, two of the three were suppressed with water. One was suppressed with retardant. And so, the, and the one that was suppressed with retardant was dangerously close to, to Snowmass Creek, to basically our drinking, our water supply. So, my, I can't implore you enough to fully sprinkler this house, so that if we did have a structural loss, it would be limited to a single structure. And again, that's, you've got no turnaround, difficult ingress and egress. And based on the three fires we've had this season in this neighborhood, it would behoove you, as the owner, to fully sprinkler this residence, given the health, safety concerns of the community.
Can I tag on real quick, just?
Quickly, I also have a question.
Yeah, and I see Francie does, too. Is sprinkling the house enough, is the question I wanted to ask of the board. I don't know, but I just want to bring up, that's a conversation where I'd want to go next. Is sprinkling the entire house going to be enough to, to get them over the finish line, or what else is needed? Thank you.
I'm curious, what, why was the tank, why can't you find a location for the tank? Why can't you bury it under the road? That's already a disturbed location.
I think, again, it would be helpful to pull up the site plan. There you go. Okay, we can start on, let's see, the south side of the existing structure, off of, like, if you're looking at Capitol Creek Road, putting a tank off of that side would be too far away from the house. And then, there's no fire truck pull-off capabilities. If you turn down that street, I'm not remembering what that street is called, but.
Esoperus.
Esoperus.
Esoperus. There's also not access off of that road for a fire truck pull-off, or, and there's another property, 37 Starlet. And then, if you actually turn onto Starlet Lane, again, we are, you're first passing 37 Starlet Lane, and then you reach 37 Starlet. And the fire department does not want to pass that first structure with a tank. They want the tank before that first structure, because, again, it's too far. So, that would make the tank too far from 37 Starlet. And at that point, you can't continue past 37 Starlet and put the tank up the road. If you look at, again, when you're on 37 Starlet, at the steep slopes, that's limited as well. There's a leach field, and we can't bury the tank at that leach field or around it. And then, again, the only opportunity for positioning the tank that meets the distance requirements to 37 Starlet are on the neighboring property. Again, the client has reached out to their neighbor, asked if they would be willing to put the tank on their property, or if they could come together and figure out a way to go on, in on the tank together. Again, the, the neighbor was not interested, which is why we resulted in sprinkling the addition.
Francie, and then Jeffrey.
So, the bottom line is that the fire department said it's okay if you only sprinkle the addition, although they don't like it, they would prefer a tank, but they did sign off on it?
They did, and we have a letter.
Yeah, okay. And then, what do the neighbors do for fire suppression?
I believe that the one neighbor that we reached out north of our property has an existing fire tank, or water tank already. And then, for the other properties, I'm not 100% sure.
The house next door doesn't have, you know, it's, it's, gets caught when it comes in the system. So, I think Greg, to your point, that just don't do anything, well, then it's not going to get, you know, it's, it's, it's probably more of a threat to have a, the house, existing house un-sprinklered than to enable the owners to do the small addition upstairs, and the, you know, bump out that's away from the riparian area, that's both permitted under the code, and, you know, bring it at least into some compliance with, with fire mitigation. You know, I think, you know, otherwise, it's just, there's, there's not, it's not going to get sprinkled, because it doesn't get caught until, you know, it comes in for permit or land use approval. So, and that's probably the same with most of the neighbors down the street. There is somebody doing a development, one of the lots that's sort of uphill, it's not on the river. And I, I did not look at the plan, but I imagine they need, have been required to do something.
I have one more question, if that's okay.
Yes, Francie, please.
So, if we wanted to approve this with the stipulation that the entire house be sprinkled, is that a possibility? Can we ask that?
Yes.
We can.
Yes.
And is it possible to sprinkler the entire house, Zoe?
It is possible.
Okay, well, I, I'm fine with this application with that addendum. So, just so you guys know where I am.
I do want to maybe take public comment, which we will need to take on this, and then perhaps give the applicant time to confer.
Yes.
And so, we will have a break before we take any vote. If there's any remaining questions, let's ask them now, before we go into public comment. Jeffrey?
So, the addendums from Roaring Fork Rural and from City of Aspen would have required, if this was a brand-new structure, they would have required this to be fully sprinklered. And in the note from Brooke dated November 4th, if the house was to be gutted and walls and ceilings exposed, yes, absolutely sprinklers required for the entire house. So, I think it's supporting sort of Francie's addition and the request of this board, I'm feeling.
And just wanted, I think it was a typo in the, in her email, it would have been picking, it would have been a Picken County requirement, not a City of Aspen requirement.
Sorry, I was, sorry, I was going back to the two fire districts, where
Yeah.
They're sprinkling at zero in the City of Aspen today, at 3,000 feet outside of the urban core, and then.
Sprinkling at zero.
So, anytime, anytime you change a structure, if you come in for a permit, they're requiring a home to be sprinkled.
Oh, I should.
So, at zero in the urban core, at 3,000 feet outside the municipal, and then 5,000 So at zero in the urban core, at 3,000 feet outside the municipal and then 5,000 further out. So this house would be knocking on that number.
Further questions? Yes.
Just the, the, the letter from Brook. I'd love it if, if Brook Stott were to come and talk to us or, you know, it, it, the letter to me just made more questions than answers. It seems like there's some ambiguity there. I want, I want to know how they arrived at their decision, if, if we could ask for that.
Okay, I'm.
Understand.
We can check in with the board perhaps when we come back from public comment to deliberate if there's support for your request to delay decision.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'm going to open up the public comment on this application. Of course, the applicants are welcome to comment, the, anyone in the public or online. If you do wish to comment, please raise your hand. Yes, come on up, please. Can we, yes, ask you to just step aside for a moment? Thank you. Please tell us your name and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Great, my name is Stephanie Heineken and I am actually the property neighbor to the north. And my concern is fire, obviously. Um, that road between our houses, between my property, um, and the Presslers, it, I think at one point it's like 15 feet wide and just in light of recent events, the fire up in Gateway where the roads were all in compliance. It's just, it's very alarming to the two residents at the end of Starlet. They would essentially be boxed in, there's like room for one fire truck in front of that house. The house, it's not in requirement with the setbacks, the house is five feet from Starlet Lane. And then it's like 15 feet wide and then it goes right up to my house. And also Flanagan and Itsler's houses would be boxed in by this situation. Um, I think it really poses a threat to the neighborhood and also up to Gateway because if it hits my hillside. And just in light, like, um, 20, what was it, 2020? Six, 6401 Esoperas Creek was hit by lightning, it was a new structure, burned to the ground. And they, they, they had, you know, ample area for fire trucks and so forth. And P S's house up on Gateway burnt to the ground. I mean, these are just really big threats. And being so close to the neighboring house, I just, I feel like that road situation is unsolvable. And everything about that property is non-conforming. And I just don't feel like the remedy is to just say, okay. Like there's, nobody else is getting these hall passes. And I just think it's, it poses a real threat to the neighbor, the immediate neighbors. And I just, I, I don't even think that there probably is a remedy, but I don't think the remedy is just to keep developing things. And so I'm just very concerned for my safety and for the neighborhood's safety. Um, in light of the fires, we had the Williams fire, you know, we've just had like five fires back there. And they've all been, you know, because of different things. So I, I just think that it's really important to take that into account. And I'm not sure, you know, that, that project was like questionable at the very beginning. That's why it went to takings. And now, you know, here we are, just keep pushing the envelope on every front. So.
Thank you very much. Can we check online again, see if anyone's joined? Okay. All right, not seeing any. All right, we are going to take, um, would you like 10 minutes? Oh, sure, come on up.
I'm Towns. That's Kathleen, she grew up in Denver and we love it here and always dreamed of having a place here. So we finally in 2023 bought it and subject to, you know, it's complicated, it really is. And Stephanie, I appreciate you coming in to, um, she's been a great neighbor. And we actually offered to put a 10,000 gallon storage tank on our property to protect her, us, everyone in the neighborhood. But I know you don't want that, but we're happy to, we're happy to do it.
We're gonna, direct comments to the board, please.
What's that?
Direct comments to the board, please.
Anyway, we're happy to do that, to put storage right across the road on the corner there. But, um, we, we, we love the property, the, you might want to learn what 3PK means, it's three Pressler kids. Our kids love it. Um, they all grew up in, working in mountain villages and, and now all have professional careers in big cities and come here and we just want a place that we can all be there together. So anyway, that's why we're here, that's why we want to do the addition, appreciate it, it's complicated. Also want to do whatever it takes to, I, I agree, th- these fires are terrifying to us. Kathleen's parents live in California, um, and seeing what happened out there, this is all, you know, scary stuff. And we thought a pump in the, you know, we want it, we're going to hopefully be able to put a pump in the creek too, to help. You know, we're going to do anything we can to help, um, suppress the fires, um, because it's a big risk. And frankly, it's the biggest investment I have. I can't, you know, and insurance companies are, you know, it's really hard to get insurance now. And, you know, I don't want to lose it, so anyway, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. And also to Stephanie's point, the house is not coming further out into the road. It, it, it's, you know, the, the line of the addition is going to be in line with what's already bumped out. So it's not going from five feet to three feet. So just, I want to make that clear, so. And yeah, I think.
Right, thank you.
10 minutes or five minutes, what do you think, for us to talk about sprinkling it?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
But thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Well, we'll plan to come back at 2:45 if you need additional time, take it.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll resume.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, welcome back everyone to the Pickens County Board of County Commissioners's regular session on Wednesday, November 19th. We are resuming our meeting to continue our discussion on resolution to approve three PK starlet activity envelope and site plan review and restoration or expansion of nonconforming structure with significant changes. I have closed the public hearing and so we are back to settle on the elements and conditions of the resolution and looking forward to hearing the applicant's response to the board's request.
So the applicant is going to request a continuance. They are willing to consider the sprinkling of the entire building but need to understand what the feasibility is and the cost.
That's fair. Okay.
Can I ask before that? Clarification on the four to five bedrooms because there was a thing that one of the bedrooms was being classified as a TV room but then was really classified as a bedroom. So we've clarified it's going to be four bedrooms so we don't have to worry about the wastewater treatment.
Correct.
Okay, that one. And yeah, and a part of the, I don't blame you for wanting to take time to vet the issue of sprinkling the house, but it would be great, I think, benefit to the neighbors, to your family, to your home, to see if there's another opportunity to maybe work with the neighbor to do a tank.
The applicants, the pressers are willing to do that as well. Of course, the neighbor was the neighbor who objected. So I'm not sure how far that's going to go.
That olive branch again because she's concerned about the safety of her house and that would be complimentary to all of those residences on that property. I really appreciate that effort. Thank you. And I thought you named it after me because my initials are PK, so thank you. Little side note.
Okay, do we have a date certain to which we would continue?
How long do you think you want, Sarah?
Land use public hearing.
When's the next, I mean with the holidays?
The third?
The third?
That's like, that's like a week.
We don't have a lot going on on the 17th.
The 17th?
I think the 3rd is Tuesday.
Or whatever it is that we have another one.
Franco, do you have enough time to turn around at something before the 3rd?
Well, we'll see, I don't, what time does?
Yeah, it's sort of the last week. I, I mean.
The 17th would work better.
We do not have a very full agenda on the 17th. So we could add it then if that works for everybody.
Yeah, I just think with Thanksgiving it becomes a, you know.
Right.
I'd like to renew my proposal that we, we just involve Healthy Rivers. I'd love to have a sense of, you know, if there's ever an opportunity for them or a streamside ecologist to weigh in on, on this, I think this would be the opportunity to do it. And it's, it's a bit of a fishing expedition, but it seems like an obvious one for me. So I don't think it would hurt to have a eyes like theirs on it, quite honestly.
Patty?
Yeah, that's out of our norm to invite Healthy Rivers and Streams in. Plus, I think what they're doing, it's not like a new structure that would be creating an impact. It's, it's kind of an allowed expansion already, so I don't know how Healthy Rivers and Streams, first of all, they, they don't really review land use applications. So I don't know how we'd bring that in at this point. I think that's something we may want to discuss in the future with Healthy Rivers and Streams to see if we can't add some provision for the actions that they do take. But I think your other concern about having Brooke from the fire district down there maybe be present at the next meeting would be a great invitation to put out there.
Great, yeah, I could revise.
I'll give you one out of two.
I could revise that to just having a consulting ecologist when it comes to things like this because it seems that we, this would never be approved in contemporary, you know, it was a new, new approval, obviously. And a lot of the concerns are around riparian quality, streamside quality, water quality. As Jeffrey points out, you know, the, the fire mitigation, the fire that was suppressed with chemicals could have easily trashed the stream. It seems that, you know, if we're really serious about protecting our streams and for all the reasons we make these setback rules and, and work on water quality, that we should have eyes on this. Whether we, it informs our decision or not, isn't as important to me as including, including comments so we're informed going forward. Thank you.
Additional discussion?
I, I think that the, that Com Dev does a really good job of vetting a place with the fire department and so I'm, I'm comfortable with their conclusion. I would like them to increase their fire suppression capability. Why not? You know, unless it's really prohibitively expensive. And if it is prohibitively, prohibitively expensive, then perhaps they should fire mitigate the existing house and not do the addition with that money. But that's not my business. I'm just saying that I don't feel the need to hear more from the fire department. They signed off on it. I don't think they sign off on things lightly and, and I appreciated the neighbors' comments. I do think however that a fire truck obstructing the exit of people, neighbors is, doesn't seem to me to be an issue. I think that would happen at my place as well, at many, many places. If you bring a big fire truck in and you have a fire and the other people can't drive out, I think that's not an uncommon occurrence with the kinds of roads we have. And I do agree with Patty on Healthy Rivers and Streams. I mean, this place was built there. They're not building it next to Capitol Creek. I do drive by this property many days on my way to work. That's the way I come and it is a pretty amazing place and I certainly understand you wanting to live there and have your family live there. I'm sure if you have followed the B O C C at all, you know I'm not a proponent of big houses whatsoever. So I don't normally like to see houses expanded when they're already 5,000 square feet, but you have the right, you know, by right to do that. So I'm not going to oppose that. But I do look forward to having you come back with further fire mitigation strategies for yourself and for your neighbors' sake.
Thank you. Come in.
Yeah, can I, I would still like to tag on and just see if someone from the Roaring Fork Fire District could just either phone in there or just in our meeting in case any, since we're going to be talking fire suppression at the next meeting, that they're just available if we have any further questions. They do that a lot if need be. So that would be an invitation we could extend to the fire district if Brooke or somebody could just be present if we had questions.
Franco, can you facilitate that on behalf of the board?
Of course.
Thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
Okay.
I'll do a motion to continue.
Thank you.
Based on the information we've received just now and a date certain of December the 17th.
I'll second along with continuance of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, good to see you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
I'm going to have to go soon. I don't know if I should go before this or...
Francie's recusing. This should be quick.
Oh, she is?
We've heard this application.
I'm going to stick around, okay. I will stick around.
We're on to item number 11, resolution of the B O C C approving Flying Dog Ranch West Incorporated Special Review Use Extension. This is continued from November 11th and from prior meetings on that we have heard this application really, right?
And just, just so the public knows, I am recusing from this. We are co-grandparents and friends and neighbors and so I think it's appropriate for me to recuse. My son lives on the Flying Dog Ranch, so.
Okay, thank you. And are you sticking around for open discussion or do you, Francie, do you want to call in for open discussion or?
No.
Okay. We'll see you another day.
I'm going to go buy some artwork.
All right, welcome.
I'm going to buy some artwork.
I'm going to buy it and I'm going to look at it.
I must say it was a unique moment when I saw all five county commissioners smiling at the same time. How unusual.
It is a unique moment.
You need to spend more time with us.
Oh, my gosh. And Greg, I heard about you on the radio this morning with your artwork.
Yeah, that was a little bit of a shock to me. There's sometimes when it's nice to be anonymous.
Was it the police blotter?
They caught up with me, Patty.
I hope things go well down there.
It's a pouch, huh? Hi, guys, how are you?
Hi, good. Good to be back.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Hopefully it'll be the last time we're back for quite a while.
I've been spending a lot of time in your neighborhood.
You have?
On the farm ranch, I've been volunteering at the farm.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
At where?
Farm. See you later.
At Seedpiece.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Wow, that's so commendable.
It's hard work. Francie, let me know about Monday.
She doesn't ever hear you.
I know, I keep reminding her. She doesn't hear me.
Okay.
How are you, Nicole? Good.
Hey.
All right, we'll turn this over to Rebecca.
Hi, Rebecca Dunlap. Great. Hello. Let's see if that's sharing. Perfect. So I'm Rebecca Dunlap, community with Community Development, and I am here to talk about Flying Dog West again, but this time for a special review instead of what we looked at last time. So we're looking at a one-step review of extending the special review use for the property's existing special events venue. You can see it right there, that's part of the barn and staff has repaired a resolution. So again, we're looking off of Prince Creek Road, off of Highway 133 outside of Carbondale. This property is completely encumbered by Aspen Valley Land Trust held conservation easement and all of the development is clustered over here and you can see the barn called out in red and then the others surrounding it are the residential ones that we looked at in previous meetings and other accessory structures. So looking at the applicant's request, this space has been an event venue for 25 years and has had many special event, special reviews and the most recent one was in 2015. And the applicant is requesting no changes to the 2015 approval. There's only a couple of things that you'll see that are updated with current practices in the county. Looking at the past 10 years and the annual report summary that the applicant submits every year, you can see that they are having anywhere from zero to 12 events with 50 or less attendees, zero to seven events with 50 to 100 attendees and no more than four events a year with 100 to 150. And you'll see in the slides coming up, I have some of the requirements for with those larger events. They've held their end with shuttles and different services provided from those events. Staff has found that the application is in conformance with currently in use code and the Crystal River Valley Master Plan. And staff has found that the applicant complied with all of the requirements set forth in the 2015 approval and no complaints were received regarding the subject event venue So some of the requirements in both the 2015 approval and this subject approval are a maximum of 40 functions per year with a maximum of 20 with 50 attendees, a maximum of 10 with 50 to 100 and 10 with 100 to 150. Five can have amplified music and a max of three per week and no more than two of up to 150 in any month. There's a maximum of 60 vehicles allowed onsite at any function and a shuttle service has to be provided with any events with 50 attendees or more where alcohol is served. Amplified music has to end by 7:00 PM and food is not prepared onsite and shuttle services obtain adequate parking areas and they're required to figure that out outside of Flying Dog West. And then with this approval, the limitations that would be included are that the applicant is required to submit an annual report to the Community Development Director every year, attesting to the number of special events, people attending, passenger vehicles, other things. And after 10 years, this permit would be reviewed at another public hearing to extend with any changes presented. And there is a condition that the use is to be discontinued within 60 days if the ranch operation is to be abandoned. And something else to call out with this is that if the operators are found not being in compliance with this approval, that use is also required to be discontinued. So it wouldn't last for the 10 years if there's things that are not in compliance going on. Only referral comments we got on this one were from A V L T expressing their support and then environmental health, this is the one really change you'll see in the resolution is that originally they were supposed to submit every two years OWTS inspection, I believe is what it was in 2015. And now environmental health is requiring that they obtain an operating permit to remain open for the special event use. So that is a condition in the resolution. So with that, staff recommends that the B O C C adopt the resolution granting approval for the Flying Dog West Special Review Use Permit Extension. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions on this? Go ahead.
Just a quick one. No, so you don't have a commercial kitchen license? Is that why there's a food prohibition? Food prep?
No, it was for water use originally.
Okay.
We do have a kitchen and the only reason it's not qualified as a catering kitchen is because of one vent we don't have over a stove. But originally it was for water use because we had to count the gallons of water that we used during an event, so we had a meter put on. And that was actually part of what the information we had to dispense to the county. They, it wasn't annual reports, then it was monthly reports.
Okay, thanks, Lydia.
Other questions? Patty?
I think it's a great, a great opportunity for the community to be up there, not only to see the beautiful space with, that's around it, but it's a great, it's a great venue. And I've been to a few events up there over the many years and it's always really enjoyable. It's kind of got a funky flavor to it.
I know why that is.
It could be one of the owners that I'm not looking at. I'm looking at you. But yeah, I, I think it's a great opportunity and hope we can move this forward today and continue to enjoy the space.
One of the few places in, in that area that has, that can entertain nonprofit all-day events, which we do, we've been doing more of those than weddings. And as you can see by the number of events that we had, there was none for four years, which was the pandemic, of course. But after the pandemic, you know, we're kind of tired of doing weddings anyhow, to be honest with you. I think I said...
The brides aren't listening right now.
I think I said 10 years ago that it's really hard to convince them that it's their special day and not ours. And that still remains to be the truth. But we, we do a lot of, we do a lot of nonprofit stuff now, which I think is really good that that part of the valley has really nothing like that.
What about the fire department, Carbondale Fire Department for a party?
Yeah. Actually, the Carbondale Fire Department did have a meeting there for the neighborhood when, years ago, when there was another big drought and there was a fire, you know, impending fire problems and actually Stark Mesa did get struck by lightning and a fire started. And so they did have a big community meeting and, I don't know, we seemed to, people like to come up there and it's different. They can go outside, they can walk around, it's different than being at the town hall. And the first actual meeting we ever had was Challenge Aspen because our pathways are wheelchair accessible. And so they really, you know, it's a great organization, so anyway.
I brought my grandkids up last spring to see the baby cows.
See the baby cows, yeah.
Greg?
Thank you. I just heard the complaints I'd heard were that you were weeping at all those weddings and it was just kind of a distraction. It was a distraction for the...
For the bride.
We've seen it all in the wedding department.
I wanted to...
You can hire John as like complimentary crying.
Yeah, John will come in. Patty's available.
If you need to see someone to cry, just call me.
Okay, we'll call you.
I do cry easily, though, that's true.
I appreciate the, the letter from A V L T was encouraging and so I'm, I'm ready to move this forward.
Any objections on the new requirement for the OWTS septic system?
No.
No? Okay. Any further questions on this? This is a public hearing. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. There is no one behind you and no one online.
That's always so great, not to see a name.
So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for either further discussion or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All right, with no amendments to the resolution as presented, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Nice to see you guys up here. I'll swing by one of these days.
I'll see you in 10 years when I'm 83.
We look forward.
I'm going to have to go in and walk.
You'll see Patty, the rest of us won't be here.
Oh, no, Patty was the only county commissioner.
She'll still be here.
I've been here.
I know.
I'm going to be across the street volunteering on the farm.
Oh, that's awesome that you do that.
You won't see us here either.
Well, cheers. Happy holidays.
Happy Thanksgiving holidays.
All right, let's move to open discussion. Is there any open discussion, John Peacock?
Don't have any today.
Any open discussion? Patty?
Yes, yesterday we talked about Basalt Chamber and we got information back about their different membership levels. It's a little interesting, they have different levels of membership. I would like the board, and maybe we can discuss this when we look at our discretionary fund, of doing a small contribution to the Basalt Chamber, like $500 or something out of our discretionary monies.
Instead of continuing to be a Confluence investor?
Yeah, I, I just think it would be nice to let them know that we are supporting them, but we don't actually send people to their meetings or really have any other involvement as a true member of the Basalt Chamber, but I would like to show some level of support. We can discuss it when we do our full discretionary funding if you guys would prefer. I'm fine with that, too. I just wanted to address the fact we asked for information and received it.
Okay, any further open discussion? I wanted to bring attention, you all may have seen a letter to the editor, which I forgot to send to you all, but related to a development very high up in the crystal by the crystal mill. There is a proposal there for some guest lodges. Our water team is also looking at an additional water rights permit relative to that. In Gunnison County, it's in front of the Gunnison Planning Commission. I reached out to Dale because I know he hangs a lot up there, just to ask if there's any, if we should be paying attention to this relative to our holdings, our conservation holdings in the area. And I wanted to just sort of float with the board if there's any concern. I personally would hate to see more intensive development up there. Part of the, I think, criticism of this project is that they have broken up their approvals into multiple requests, so they're like, they're going for a piece at a time, you know, which is now the guest cabins and in the future a private ski area and things like that, so I'm concerned.
Well, I'm not knowing anything really about it. If the board chooses to have staff look into it and bring us back some kind of a memo that we can see, I don't know if I have concerns or not at this point, but I'd rather know if I have concerns or not.
Well, that, that would be a place to start. I, you know, obviously would need support to invest any staff time into looking into it.
I don't know if we have, but baby, did you hear back from Dale? I know he's been traveling.
He said SAVEPA has been looking at it and that Open Space hasn't really looked at it, but it might make sense to given...
That's a great idea.
The fact that we have conservation parcels in the neighborhood.
And if there's water impacts, maybe Healthy Rivers and Streams might want to look at it, Greg.
I think that's a good reason to call them in.
Okay.
I, I would support asking staff to look, look at it because it does affect us, it affects our watershed. It's a historic, something of great historic value. The town of Crystal itself is, is a remarkable time capsule going back to my childhood and long before that. The mill, of course, is a, is a, is a national treasure or should be considered that and I think that area should definitely be protected and, and I have no idea what, what's happening up there. I appreciate the comment and I, I would like to, I'd like to direct staff to inform us about it.
I'm not sure if I look to you or to John. I'm not sure if I look to you, or to John, or...
Do you have three of us?
Yes.
Should we start with Open Space and Trails?
Yeah, I've just, given, given our transition time, I'm sort of, who do, who's going to take that and figure it out?
I'll email Kara. So...
You don't have an email anymore.
So, this is, this is really looking into the proposed development.
This is a land use application in Gunnison County.
Crystal Mill. And seeing if we have comments that we'd want to make. Yep.
Thank you. And we may be a little behind the bar, because I think their planning commission is hearing it shortly, but we'll do what we can. Thank you, appreciate the support. Any further open discussion? Any updates on Shoshone, Rye, that you've gotten? I haven't.
Nope, haven't seen anything come in from the hearings today yet.
Okey-dokey.
I think they're still going.
Okay.
I thought I saw Levi pop on line. Came by for a while, he was here.
I don't know if he was going to bring the letter back, but I didn't think he needed to.
Do you need a motion?
I'm waiting to see if Levi is joining us for open discussion, I think was the implication that Jeffrey was suggesting.
He usually listens in just so he knows if we've assigned war work to him.
I was just watching the...
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
The letter about the secure rural schools funding.
Yes.
The chair some point last night.
Okay, let me have a look. All right, thanks, Levi. And I think Greg has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you all. We'll see you in two weeks after the Thanksgiving holiday.
John's going to be here next week, though. He thinks we have minutes.